Okay, we are live.
All right, well, welcome, everybody. Um, real, real quick before we get started on everything, I want to congratulate Lisa and Brett on being new council members. I want to tell you how excited I am to work with this team. I've been able to talk to all of you at least once, if not several times. And I think it's going to be a lot of fun. We'll get a lot of stuff accomplished. Hopefully, we make Tim that better in two years while we had this time together and I'm excited about it. We've got great people, great, really, everybody's hearts in the right spot, so I'm excited and anxious to work with each and every one of you. So thanks. So let's start with Tim with Development Authority. Do you want to call to order, Melissa?
My spacebar wasn't working.
You know what? I think both unless you think there's somebody around, I think both you and Wes ought to keep your volume on.
All right. Okay, roll call. Chairperson Mark Sukup.
Here.
Commissioner Aaron Pearson.
Here.
Commissioner Rick Collins.
Here.
Commissioner Lisa Lake.
Here.
Commissioner Brett Hanson.
Here.
Okay, I don't think there's any amendments to the agenda. Skip down, public comment. Melissa, we don't have anything, do we?
There is no public comment for this meeting.
Okay. Do, I don't see it. Do I have to ask for minutes here?
Generally, you ask for approval of the consent agenda?
And that's in the minutes there. Okay, great. So can I have approval for the consent agenda, which the only thing on it is TDA meeting minutes? And Brett, you and I can't vote on this because we weren't there. Okay, so.
I would, this is Rick. I would so move those minutes under the consent agenda for TDA.
Second.
Okay, I'll, do we need to roll call this or can we, since it's virtual, or can we just say aye, Melissa? Or Robert, what should we do there?
Yes, Chair, I didn't double check this resolution, but the ordinance included a roll call requirement.
For everything.
Okay, great. So Melissa, would you do a roll call?
Yes. Commissioner Aaron Pearson.
Yes.
Commissioner Rick Collins.
Yes.
Commissioner Lisa Lake.
Yes.
Commissioner Brett Hanson.
Uh, yes.
Okay, and Chairperson Mark Sukup.
And I don't think I get to vote, and I don't think Brett gets to vote. So because we weren't there. So I think, I don't know how that, how should that get recorded, Robert?
Uh, Chair, they can vote even though they weren't there because they had the ability to observe the meeting, but uh, three votes in favor is just as effective as five.
Okay, let's just leave it at three and that way we don't that, that's everybody that was there that was a member at that time. Um, resolution, Robert, do you want to take that?
Absolutely. The, the commission will recall that during the COVID emergency, the board authorized the use of electronic signatures. That provided an opportunity for staff to, to observe the process and see how it was working. It's worked very effectively. And so this resolution would extend that authorization and adopt a policy that governs the process for using, using and accepting electronic signatures for TDA business. It would, it would help the TDA keep pace with technical technological advances that are now widely recognized in Colorado, specifically by the General Assembly, the, the state legislature and the Laramie County Court System. He points or that are that, of course, the, the use of these signatures would need to be in conformance with state law and other applicable policies. The TDA would still accept scanned, copied, in fact, similarly documents containing original handwritten signatures. And the resolution would maintain the rule that only an authorized signatory can execute the document. It would also ratify any previous electronic signatures that have been accepted by the TDA. So the, the big advantage is that this just increase increases administrative efficiency and costs and having to email back and forth and sign documents by hand and scan them and then email them back. If there are any questions regarding the proposed resolution, I'd be happy to answer them.
Any questions? Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
I'll second.
Okay, all those, oh, do a roll call, Melissa, please.
Okay. Commissioner Aaron Pearson.
Yes.
Commissioner Rick Collins.
Yes.
Commissioner Lisa Lake.
Yes.
Commissioner Brett Hanson.
Yes.
Chairperson Mark Sukup.
Yes. All right. Do I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
So moved.
Second.
Although, would you do a roll call?
Commissioner Aaron Pearson.
Yes.
Commissioner Rick Collins.
Yes.
Commissioner Lisa Lake.
Yes.
Commissioner Brett Hanson.
Yes.
Chairperson Mark Sukup.
Yes. Okay, that meeting's closed. We will now start the meeting for the Timnith Town Council. Melissa, will you call it to order?
Yes. Just a second. Okay. Mayor Mark Sukup.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Aaron Pearson.
Here.
Councilmember Rick Collins.
Here.
Councilmember Lisa Lake.
Here.
Councilmember Rick, I'm sorry, Brett Hanson.
All right, um, Melissa, I understand there's no amendments to the agenda?
There are no amendments to the agenda, correct.
Um, we've got the consent agenda there with meeting minutes and check register. Do I have any comments to the consent agenda?
Mayor, could we back up to the public comment number three?
Okay. Oh, we did have a public comment. I'm sorry. Thank you.
No problems.
Yeah, so I, and I think Matt's going to read it. So Matt, could you read the letter for public comment, please?
Thank you, sir.
Yes, I will. Thank you, Mayor. This is to, to the Timnith Mayor and Town Council. My name is John Barkley and my address is 6090 Prior Road, Timnith, Colorado 80547. Telephone number is 951-640-5183. And I am available to answer any questions before, during, or after the meeting on this matter. I'm hopeful that we can have a civil and effective discussions on this and other matters in the future. As I stated in my previous comments on this topic, I am 100% all in for health and safety of our residents. I'm totally in favor of having a street sweeping program for both environmental and quality of life reasons. This is a great service to provide to our residents and one of the good things that can keep being a special place to make a home. I realize that the cost of a street sweeper is relatively small compared to the total town capital spending. But with the sudden and potential catastrophic financial impact of the coronavirus budgets, paying attention even to small stuff is even, is more important than ever. Prudent decisions require examination of not only the initial costs for capital outlay, but also need to take into account the burden of future years operating costs. I call this the total cost of ownership concept. In summary, my recommendations are, one, contract this service out now to clean all the streets at least once. Two, understand in more detail what the actual current and future cost would realistically be as part of the 2021 budgeting process. And three, wait until the economy settles out before making this capital and future operating expense commitment. I would also like to thank Mr. Toronto for addressing some of my concerns in his April 28 report on the street sweeper resolution. This communication is a follow-up after reading the new report. And I request that the town council consider my comments before voting on this resolution.
Okay, John, thank you. And we'll be talking about that subject a little bit later.
Mayor, there is, there is, pardon me, there is additional in your packets, a couple more pages of comments that I'd like for you to, as part of the record.
Okay.
Thank you. Sorry.
Um, did you want to talk about it, Matt, or are you just identifying it?
I'm just identifying it. So it's on the record that they will be a part of the meeting minutes for the next meeting.
Okay. Um, consent agenda. Any comments on that? Um, Melissa, we do, let's see, do I have a, a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Uh, will you do a roll call, Melissa?
Yes.
You know what, before you do it, just so anybody that's listening in and stuff, because this is virtual, we have to do roll call as opposed to just doing an oral yea or nay. So the reason we're going through this, we're not trying to waste your time, but what we are trying to do is stay within the law of Colorado. And so that's why we're doing that. So go ahead.
Mayor Pro Tem Aaron Pearson.
Yes.
Councilmember Rick Collins.
Yes.
Councilmember Lisa Lake.
Yes.
Councilmember Brett Hanson.
Yes.
Mayor Mark Sukup.
Yes. Uh, reports. I'm not going to repeat myself earlier, but my only report is I'm excited to work with all of you. I think we, we're going to be able to accomplish a lot of, of great things and I'm, I'm excited about it. So does any council person have any comments they'd like to make?
Um, I'd like to make a quick comment, Mayor. Um, I just, something that I've brought up before, which I think in these particular times, it's even more relevant is perhaps looking into at some point always recording our meetings and whether we provide it live or just a recording for all future meetings. I think we're able to kind of try it out a little bit right now. It'll be a little bit different when we all meet in person. But I think that would be something that I would encourage us to kind of investigate and look into what it would take to always be able to either show live or record meetings for community members to view afterwards. So I would just like to say that. And then also just want to say thanks to all the work being done on the sidewalks that are being done over by the bridge on Harmony and the path that's coming back up to County Road Five in Harmony where it'll be a little bit easier for people to bike and pedestrians to cross and things like that. I know that's something that's been brought up in the past as well. So hopefully, community members are seeing that work being done and know that that's being completed. And then also, the last thing is that there was a community member who kind of takes care of the little libraries. And she did get the message today that there will be new little libraries going in soon. So just thanks for getting all of that together. And I'm looking forward to that. They've been really, really popular during this time when people are not able to go to the library. So it's really good timing, I think, for that as well.
Um, so two things on that, Lisa. One is, and I agree with you on recording the meetings. Do, Wes, I think you were going to bring that up later in this meeting. Should we wait till then or discuss it now?
Well, I think the appropriate point, we have it scheduled for 7D. There's an item called live council meetings. And I think Brian will be ready to give us just a little more data so we can inch down that path, get some feedback from the council about what you're, what you're expecting, what you're looking for. Brian may have some preliminary numbers and then we'll queue this up for action at a, at a soon to be coming meeting if you, if you so direct.
Great. So thanks, Lisa, for guiding that.
Yeah.
Go ahead, Rick.
Yeah, I, I would support recording, but I would say that it's got to be done right. We did it the legislature and when we first initiated it, it took us a while to get it right because people couldn't hear the quality wasn't quite right. So whoever's in charge of it there, I know it's a, it's a big task. It sounds easy, but it, it does take a little bit of effort to get the thing where the logistics and the quality is where somebody can actually listen in.
And I, and I agree with what Lisa commented. I think that the quality of these things as they keep going are getting better and better each time. So I think
Yeah.
the learning curve is starting to flatten out again. So good comment, Rick.
Yeah.
Um, Lee, staying on it, Lisa, do you, do you think it'd be appropriate, nice for the council to send a thank you to the lady who's running the library and, and say, you know, one of those nice official letters?
Um, I don't think that would hurt. I think she's had some contact, I think with Kevin over the course of the last couple of years since they've been in there. And she's, she definitely, I mean, it's all, it's nothing that she's required to do or anything like that. But she definitely does take time to collect the books. In the last few weeks, she's actually gone out to all of them to use some disinfectant and kind of clean them and, and things like that as well. Um, and stores books at her house goes around to all of them, you know, make sure that they all have them. So.
Hey Wes, why don't, why don't we prep up a thank you letter to her next time? Uh, we can either electronically signature or sign a, a letter and send it off to where it's nice somebody to do on that, I think.
All right.
Does everybody agree with the general idea of that?
It looks like it'd be a good one for the Tim with magazine.
Yeah, they ought to run that.
Okay.
Okay. Committee reports. I'm going to let he, I'm going to just buzz through and if the person presenting that wants to highlight something or identify something that they feel is important for us to discuss, I want you to do it. And Christine, I know you do. So we're starting with you in the finance report. Go ahead, Christine.
Uh, so thank you very much, Ms. Mayor. So included in your packet is our finance report and the February 29 financial statements are attached. Um, I did summarize some key highlights and explanations. Hopefully those were helpful to you and I trust that the, the council had a chance to, to review that. Um, I will go ahead and pause and ask if any of the council members have any specific questions?
This is Rick and I, I think it looks real good. And I know that it's the big elephant in the room is just what's going to happen with the COVID virus and what's second to your revenues. Right now, it looks like we're running away with the Costco and Walmart, which is great, of higher sales tax. Just to monitor.
So probably next, Christine, maybe on the, what is it, the 26? That you do the same kind of analysis you did on this one, which I'm sure you would, but where you compared last year to this year on our, just our revenues to give us a feel of, is that still staying above, above the line or slightly above? And that'd be great if you could.
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely. And, and so that's a good segue in addition to the, the standard monthly finance report included in the council packet as well. We had prepared a financial analysis, kind of impacts on revenues as Councilmember Collins mentioned. We also talked about an exercise in concert with a direction received from Wesley that we went ahead as staff and did some preliminary review of where could there be some cost saving measures? Uh, should the time come when council would want to consider that? So that's also included in that additional report. That is entitled financial analysis in COVID-19. So once again, I, I trust that council had a chance to take a look at that. Certainly, we're happy to answer any questions or as mentioned in the communication. If council would like to arrange for a separate work session or separate meeting to maybe talk about some of the details of some of those potential cost savings. Uh, we're happy to do so. So, and yes, we will very much update this on a monthly basis in the upcoming months. Yes.
Right.
Mr., oh, go ahead, Mayor.
I was just going to thank Christine and, and.
I had one other one.
Yeah, go.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, Christine, at the end of your document, you talk about FEMA grants and the possibility. Is the town, and maybe Wes should answer this, I don't know, is the town currently spending money in regards to COVID-19? It might be scraped back from the feds through FEMA?
Um, so, so I'll take a swing at it. I've asked Christine and desire both to engage with the FEMA training and to look at what, uh, those, those opportunities are. You know, as you can well imagine with FEMA, there's a lot of strict requirements about how you account for monies that could be potentially reimbursed. So at this point, we're going through trying to figure out what the programs are. What are eligible cost reimbursements? How, how best to practice reimbursement? And at what point might it be prudent then to, to submit those? So we're still on the front end of the learning curve, trying to figure out what's going to be eligible as well as how best to account for that. So Christine, do you have anything else to add?
Yeah, and that's exactly the point. I think our, our largest expenditures this year so far that we foresee are the additional attendance that will be required and needed because of the virus at the reservoir. We're projecting that's going to amount to about $20,000 of additional salaries and benefits, both from an early start and the additional attendance. And Matt certainly speak more to it if, if you'd like to have more information. So we're very fortunate as a town because we don't have to compare to other local governments, specifically counties, for example. We don't have medical offices, hospitals. So some of the very significant expenditures that are being incurred by governments were somewhat sheltered by that just based on, you know, the industries that are within the, the town of Timnith. But yes, there are some costs and we're going through what those costs may be and what the documentation is and whether or not we're going to pursue that as far as applying for reimbursement from feds. Thank you.
Just to kind of tag on, if I may, Mayor, just real quick, I know there's been a lot of news with Fort Collins Loveland. Uh, I have a good friend who's a CFO in Broomfield about their furloughs. And a lot of, and not all, I don't want to say that, but a substantial amount of those furloughs are done in positions for which employees have been in essence on the payroll, but have not been actually doing the work, for instance, recreation centers, community pools. Just those kinds of things. So not, not all of them, but a large portion of what those positions. And so they don't know when they're going to open those. And in order to, because they've had a, a lot of their businesses shutting down a way to, to cut costs as well as just acknowledge it works not being done is to furlough these employees. So as Christine mentioned, we're really not in that position. We don't have those kinds of programs here at the town. And so it's a pretty lean operation. And so we haven't had to, it hasn't been necessary to do that a date, to date.
I'll sort of tack on with, with segwaying from you, Wesley. My, I think, I think it's worthwhile, everyone to know, we only have four part-time people out. I think I was explaining to me. And so we're not talking a big bunch of furlough and the four part-time we have are all working the reservoir or the parks, which are getting almost double, triple, quadruple the amount of usage than what they once did. So for our particular town, there's really no room to furlough if we want to keep everyone safe and protected on this deal. So plus the cost is, is not that much. But it's needed. It's needed.
And as Christine alluded to, Councilman Collins as well as, we continue to monitor this. We're going to keep this on your agenda on the financial statements every single month and give you an update on both where we're at on the revenue side as well as any additional substantial expenditures that are required as well. So.
Right. And I know Wes that you're working with the counties as well.
Yes, sir. That's correct.
So the counties are keeping on top. The mayor had asked me to join into the conversations with Weld County and with the White House people. And I've been doing that. And mainly it's going to fall on the county and the county is going to help us if we need help. And if they need help, I think we need to help them as well.
Yes, sir. That's correct. Thank you.
Back to while we're talking about that, Rick, do you, can you give a one, two minute summary of, of the lies on your doing with the COVID?
Well, but I've been sitting in on the conversations with small towns, cities and with the Indian tribes. And then also joining the phone calls with Weld County. And they're in the same situation. People have a lot more questions than answers. And especially when it comes to funding and how funds can be used, I don't envy anybody that has to deal with that. Because it's still a shot in the dark. These conversations take place once a week at both the county level and the White House level. They're excellent resources because Lisa would like it. They even talk about the behavioral health aspect, the HHS and all the different departments. But at this point, it just staying in touch with them. So as they get farther down the line, they figure out what they're, they can do and can't do. And I can tell you in the case of my prior history in Arizona, working with FEMA and some of these people, it usually turns out to be pretty good in the end. You sit there sweating a lot and you're worried about things. But usually when they come to the table at the end, it turns out pretty good. So I think the big thing now is just to stay in the game and to be part of their discussions and let them know we care.
Thanks, Rick.
Um, Mayor, can I ask a quick question?
Absolutely.
So Rick, you mentioned Weld County. Is there a reason that you're participating in that one rather than Laramie County?
Yeah, uh, no, we do both. We do both, but the reason is we're part of the growth management area for Welders. And because of our relationship close to Windsor and that, they invited us to participate as well.
And you said you do Laramie as well as Weld?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, great. Thanks, Lisa. Um, hey Christine, thank you for a great report. I like, I love the summary of how we're doing comparatively revenue wise. So thanks for doing that. Yeah, Brett. I muted Brett, that way you don't have to hold up. Go on.
Right. I was on the wrong window on the computer. Um, I just had a couple of quick clarification questions on the financial stamps, just to make sure I'm up to speed on the numbers there. My question's about the, the year to date numbers for the revenue on license fees and charges. It looked like we have a a much higher revenue on the actual year to date versus our budgeted year to date. Uh, it looked like it was largely due to building fees and building assessments. So I'm just curious where the variation from that comes from. Is that just money comes in sooner than we expected? Do we expect it to all balance out by the end of the year? And then I have a similar question regarding our parks and rec spending. It looked like our Timnas South Regional Park spending is, is a lot lower than we had budgeted for at this point in the year. So is that just simply a delay in us getting those expenditures out or are we seeing cost savings? If Christine could comment on those couple.
Sure, sure. No, good questions, good observations. Um, as far as the revenues associated or related to building development activity, does seem that based on current activity and discussions with various builders that the current positive variances are likely to continue. Um, and that at year, year end, we are disappointed projecting that we're going to exceed what was originally budgeted for in 2020. Having said that, obviously, this is something that staff is going to have to monitor, will monitor very closely in the future weeks and months. Since there is certainty of how the play out and what impact that may have. But right now, it looks like we are going to exceed what was budgeted for in 2020. Um, as far as the question on the positive variance related to the Timnas South Regional Park. Um, that's more of a matter of optimistic year to date budgeting. We thought we would get more accomplished in the first two months. That was our best educated guess. We do think that this lag is going to catch up by year end and what it will actually be expended. Um, and I will pass it on, Matt, if you have any additional comments on development revenues or Brian on the community party that you might want to add?
Yeah, I'd like to just say on the building side of things, there was a, a little bit of a panic when the stay at home and everything started happening is if we would be able to like continue to issue permits. And so there was a rush then. And then now we're seeing actually this the building community wants to keep building. So they're pushing a lot of permits through that. So they're pushing a lot of permits through that we, we weren't even anticipating just yet. So it's, it's a pretty aggressive building approach right now. And we hope to see it continue. I think our lot inventory is our probably bigger concern where we are. They're consuming the lots faster than we're bringing more lots to the table.
Okay, thank you.
Great. Thanks, everybody.
Brian, do you want to talk about the park at all or do you need any further clarification on that? Brett?
No, I think, I think I'm good. Okay. Thank you.
Thanks. All right, thanks. Well, I didn't even get past the first agenda item and I already got the town attorney shaking his head wondering what he's got into. I forgot to ask for a vote of the consent agenda, even though I did, I think. Didn't I ask for a first and a second, but I forgot the vote? Sorry, guys. So Melissa, could you do a roll call on the vote to accept the consent agenda?
Yes. Mayor Pro Tem Aaron Pearson?
Yes.
Councilmember Rick Collins?
Yes.
Councilmember Lisa Lake?
Yes.
Councilmember Brett Hanson?
Yes.
Mayor Mark Suker?
Yes. Okay. Hopefully I don't do that too much. So that brings us to engineering report. Don, did you have anything you wanted to discuss? Don Tron?
Unless somebody else has a, a comment and there might be, I'll just wait to answer a question.
Do we have any question? Brett?
Yeah, in your report, Don, you mentioned that the three-bell railroad crossing, the railroad was expressing concerns about continuing construction there due to the COVID situation. But you had noted that construction was deemed an essential industry. So I was just curious on, are we going to see any delays? Do you have any recommendations so we can keep that project moving forward?
Yeah, and to answer that, just last Friday, we, we did reach out to the railroad and, and they, they told us that they're, the National Railroad of Great Western has shut them down for all construction. But what they have done is they've given us approval to be able to do the towns portion of the work that's in there right away. And, and we're very happy to get that. And so we've got three bids out for that work that we should receive on Wednesday of this week. Once we get those bids, we expect to, to have that in front of you for the first meeting in May for approval, hopefully to move forward and do all the portions of the work that the town has required to do.
And just give everyone.
Yeah, excuse me, we'll, we'll continue to push them. And they, they're saying that they, as soon as the, the stay-at-home order is lifted, they will schedule all this and we're going to have to stay on them to make sure that happens. As you know, they've been difficult to deal with historically.
Don, just to give somebody that's not familiar with the crossing you're talking about and what's going on, could you just, point of context, give a real short where the location is and that?
Sure. It's, it's the three-bell crossing that's, you know, between Harmony and River Pass. And it's going to be signalized and improved up to a, to a quiet crossing. In other words, there's going to be actually gates that come down similar to the ones that are on, on Harmony and on the other name escapes me.
Summerfield Parkway.
Summerfield, thank you very much. Summerfield and Harmony. And, and it'll have islands that are, that are installed both south and north of the, of the tracks. So that's the construction that you'll see. And then the railroad will improve the portion that's, you know, on, on the actual tracks and put the, the gates up.
Thanks, Don.
Sure thing.
Any other questions, Don?
Yeah, I have one. Don, can you just give an update on that Walmart access? I mean, we've been trying to get these parties to the table for well over a year. It looks like there's one that's still holding out.
Yeah, there is, and that, that is somebody that, that Walmart's going to help us with. But just so you know, I am, I am calling and emailing the, the identified person by Walmart and everybody else as the, our linchpin to get them moving daily now. So he's going to, he's going to be irritated by me before this is over. But, but he's getting an email and a call from me every day. So he will return it at some point, but he hasn't yet. Thanks, Don. Sure.
Anybody else? Okay, moving on, community development. Matt, is there anything you wanted to discuss?
Yeah, there are a couple of things. Hopefully, I mean, it's a pretty lengthy report there that I've got. Couple of things, though, that just wanted to highlight regarding Timothy Ranch. I have those development actions listed in there. And there's, you know, I know that some of you know about this and some of you are new to the, to the conversation regarding neighborhood meetings. We did adopt our land use code to require neighborhood meetings. And this application kind of missed that adoption. So there, when they came in initially, it wasn't a requirement. So we tagged them now and they're going to be going back to a neighborhood meeting and it's going to be all the gatherings and whether they can do it virtually or not. So there's still some uncertainty there. And, but, but those types of applications like comprehensive plan amendments, sketch plans, rezonings, preliminary plaits, those require those neighborhood meetings in advance of any public hearings. So that, so you'll be seeing a lot more of those things happening. And they, they happen behind the scenes a little bit, but then you'll get a, an update as part of the public, public hearing that you will see. One of our staff members will attend that meeting and they'll provide minutes and things like that from the meeting. So there'll be a kind of a synopsis of the outcome of those things and be brought forward for your consideration when those applications come forward. And then the other one was Timothy Landing, which is on tonight. Again, this is, this is a final plat which doesn't require a neighborhood meeting. But they're earlier, they've been in this process for years now.
And Matt, Matt, I'm going to cut you off. You're going to talk later on this, so can we just go to there when that comes about?
Sure thing. Yep, no problem.
Great, thanks. And one thing, I think I, one of the things that I saw when I was out canvassing and stuff before was a number of people saying that they weren't aware of, of certain things that was occurring in their neighborhood as far as rezoning and that. And as Matt identified, in the future, there is going to be a neighborhood meeting for any annexation, any rezoning that occurs. And so everyone will have their ability to make their voice heard on that. Thanks, Matt.
No problem. I'm available to answer any other questions if you have them on the community development report.
Mayor, a question?
Go ahead, Lisa.
Or I guess maybe more of a comment. But I know some communities, when they, you know, they put the yellow-orange signs on the land where it says like proposal under review. I think we have some of those around town as well. In some communities, they'll have like a number that's assigned to each project so that people can then go online and look up where, where it's at, any of the plans that may have been submitted, any, any of that kind of paperwork. Or is that something that is feasible and something we could look at? So that even if it's something that doesn't have a town meeting or if it is something that has a town meeting, but the town meeting's not, you know, for a few months, people can, as they drive in by, they can see that number and go onto the website to kind of get more information about what's going on. Is that something that could potentially be done?
Yeah, actually you're, that's a great, great comment. We, we've ordered those numerals for the signs. We've ordered new signs and they're already, they're actually sitting here in the office. And as new projects come in, we're going to be putting those up. And Kevin has created a GIS, interactive GIS map. And it's on the website that anybody can go to. And you can actually pick on projects that are under construction or in development. And there will be planned, there are already plans up there. So you can get some information about those. We haven't keyed that to numbers just yet, but we will be looking on that soon. So that is going to directly, should directly answer all the.
Awesome. Thank you. Maybe we can get that out on social media to let people know that that's available as well.
Great points.
Yeah, I think Kim's listening in, so Kim, make a note on that. Thanks, Lisa. Police report, Terry, I don't think you had anything, but if you do, comment.
Thanks, Mayor. Nothing really, other than the COVID-19 has certainly impacted our ability to contact folks. We're handling all calls as they come in. We haven't had any incidents of that nature. We're still making the few arrests that we do over at Walmart for disturbance and theft, that kind of thing. Walmart's policy is, is very, very generous with individuals that they contact in part because they're concerned about their own employees. Our directed patrols have increased significantly because we're keeping the troops busy. And as mentioned earlier, we were talking about FEMA reimbursements. I changed the hours, asked some officers to come in on overtime on a couple of occasions just for extra patrol safety issues. But it totaled up to 11 hours. And what we found out is the, the paperwork required by FEMA is pretty extensive. So we have limited our overtime based on, well, quite frankly, people were behaving rather positively. We suspected that our domestic violence cases would go up. They have not. In fact, our assaults have kind of zeroed out in our domestic cases also. So not, I'm knocking on a wooden desk right now. I hope it stays like that. But we're looking forward to Councilmember Hanson and Councilmember Lake coming out tomorrow to meet the troops as you did, Mayor. And then Rick will set you up for the future. And Aaron, you know where we're at, so you're certainly welcome anytime. But on Wednesdays, we do training and this accomplishes a variety of things for us where all hands are on deck and then we're able to take care of some of the training that the post board in Colorado requires.
Awesome. Thanks, Terry. Wes, do you want to make any comments at this point?
No, sir, I have one item on the retreat for later, that's it.
Great. Okay, resolution on street sweeper, Don?
Yes, I think. Okay, am I there now? No. There we go. All right. Okay, I, I'm going to, the way I'm going to do this, and I appreciate Mr. Barclay's letter, actually, and I'll use that as at least a guide here. But before I start with that, if there's anybody else that has questions, I'll, I can try to field those. And if there aren't, I'll just kind of start through the highlights of Mr. Barclay's because I think I can hit the majority of his, his questions.
Fairway.
All right. So you, you have the, 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 the report from last time. And Mr. Barclay highlighted some things that, that were not in there, but it wasn't because we didn't have the information. It was just because we hadn't been really asked for all of it. So as far as operating costs, now you, you understand we've got that, an IGA with the city of Loveland. And, and it took us a while to get that, but it's a very good vehicle for us to, to have that, for them to do our maintenance for all our vehicles. Well, that's how we got a lot of the operating cost information because the city of Loveland operates the same sweeper that I'm recommending here and has for many years. So I have four years of operating costs on the exact same sweeper from them. And, and those operating costs, I'll just throw out some numbers and then I'll, I'll add, you can, I can answer any questions associated with it. But as it relates to operating costs, it's about $28 per hour for the sweeper. And these sweepers are, are, it's a function of hours of operation, not necessarily miles. In addition to that, there's $4 per hour for the fuel associated with it. So it's 32, basically $32 per hour of operation. Now, I'll, I'll circle back to that in just, in just a minute. I have looked at two other sweepers that are similar to this. There are other manufacturers, there's Elgin and Stuart Amos. The Elgin one that is similar to this, and Loveland used to have Elgin sweepers and they went away from those about five years ago for various reasons. And so the Elgin that is similar to this is called the Eagle and its, its cost approximately is $285,000. The Stuart Amos sweeper that, that is similar to the one we're looking at is a Starfire S-4XL, which I'm sure you were just anxious to hear that. And it's, it's about $270,000. So these things give us a sense of, of whether we're, we're kind of in the ballpark with what we're trying to do or not. And as you know, the one that we're suggesting is a demo. They do not happen very often. They, they aren't available very often. These, these vehicles are not things that are on the lot like, like you could go down to Ford or GMC or Chevy and just buy. They're, they're not built unless somebody orders them. So you, you go down, you, you customize what you want and then you order it. You put a down payment on it and then you wait six to nine months for it to get built. That's how it's normally done. That's exactly how our last snowplow truck was done. If you remember, when we purchased it, we had to, we had to do exactly what I said and it took, oh, about nine months for it to get beacon, to, to be constructed and delivered. So this is a unique opportunity that we have with this. So in addition to that, I'll, I'll move on and, and talk about the continuation of, oh, John or Mr. Barclay asked about warranty. Warranty for this, for this particular vehicle is five years and 6,000 hours on all the hydraulic components. And then it's two-year coverage for all the motors and valves, which is basically the rest of the, of the vehicle itself. Now, after saying that, I'll tell you that, that these things, and this is, I don't know any other way to say it like this. These things are designed and built to beat themselves to death. There are thousands of moving parts in them and they're, they are difficult and they have to be maintained constantly. So after saying that, going back to the, the, the numbers that we had for maintenance, we kind of estimate that what we really would use this for is about 200 hours a year, which should allow us to sweep the entire town three times. Okay, now, is that something that we have to do right now? Probably not, but, but by next year, when we are with the MS4 requirements on the stormwater, we're going to have to do that. So, so that's where that is. And that number would equate out to about $6,400 a year in maintenance costs and fuel costs, not counting for the, the labor or our, our public workers drivers. Now, after talking about that, that's another component of Mr. Barclay's letter. We are hiring an additional public works person this year. We have the ad out. We've got a couple of, of applicants that we're going to be interviewing. With that additional person, we should have the, the required amount of people to adequately deal with this additional piece of equipment. Okay, let me, let me just go one more. I'm kind of getting some of his questions all answered in a, in a kind of an envelope here. So to give you an idea of how much these sweepers are used in Loveland, each one of their sweepers are used an average of 600 hours a year. They believe that sweeper will last somewhere between 10 to maybe 12 or 14 years with that usage and good maintenance. If we use our sweeper the way we are expecting to do it at 200 hours a year, that's a third of the time that, that Loveland uses it. We expect it to be able to last much longer. And so that's, that's the crux of what we're trying to do here is, is get a piece of equipment that can last a long period of time and overachieve for the town. Let's see. Talked about warranty, talked about maintenance, talked about hours. Let me see if there's anything else. I think that might cover it unless somebody else has a question. Oh, well, let, let me just, one more thing. The demo unit that we've got, obviously you've looked at that and it's $262,000. And, and we, we believe that these, these things come available like this very seldom. And for it to become available, it's exactly the same unit that the city of Loveland has and has had great, let's just say, usage with. And it's the one they. And it's the one they, they, they recommend, uh, highly. Uh, it's just an opportunity that we, we think we have a, a hard time overlooking. The, the other component of Mr. Barclay's letter said to, to, to maybe look at contracting this service out for this period of time until we can get more information. I'm, I'm thinking he didn't understand that. Well, I'm sure he didn't because we hadn't given it to him that, that we had the rest of this information. I think it would cost somewhere between 75 and a hundred thousand dollars a year to contract out the same services if we were to sweep the town a hundred percent three times. So that's a lot of information in a short period of time, but, uh, any questions? Rick.
Yeah, Mayor, and I don't know if this is the right time or not, but, uh, let me say this. Uh, I had questions about this uh, at our last meeting and was pulled off the agenda, but Don, you've answered them. Uh, excellent. Uh, the bid, I, I would like to see things that are costing this much go to bid, but I know you've done your homework and there's only a limited amount of people that even sell these things.
Correct.
And you've got comparisons. Uh, as you said, it's a demo. Uh, the MS4, after the 220 census, we're going to be pushed up into another bracket, which means we have to do a better job of cleaning the streets before it goes into the gutters. Uh, our IGA with Loveland, it's fantastic because they are used to dealing with this machine itself. Uh, the only question I'd have, and it's probably not for you, it's probably for my colleagues on the council, is we might want to think about instead of lease purchasing this thing to go ahead and outright buy it. Uh, I think the town has money in its capital line of about $2 million for capital, uh, funding. And if we bought this thing, we would be saving ourselves around 10 or 11,000 at least, plus the hassle of leasing it and then going out and getting a bank and going that way. So I would like to at the right time, if I get any consensus from the council, to maybe, uh, amend the motion where we go ahead and outright purchase this thing if we can.
Great. Thank you, Rick. I got one more piece of information that you, uh, spawned my mind and I didn't, I didn't tell you. I did reach out to Loveland and this is, this is, uh, and we had done this before. Uh, Mr. Barclay put it in his, his memo and I forgot to say anything about it. We asked him if they would sweep our streets and it's just one of those things. It's kind of like they wouldn't wash our trucks. I mean, it, there's, there's certain things that, that they just don't do. And, and so, uh, that's just one of them. We, it'd be hard if, if not impossible to get them to do it long-term. I could get them to sweep, sweep a street just by, by, by getting that one time, but not continuously.
Brett, you had a question.
Uh, yeah, so just.
You, you muted yourself.
How about now?
There you go. There you go.
Alright, so just making sure to understand the, the financial statements there. Talked about we budgeted $14,000 for street sweeping. Uh, what exactly is included in those costs? Is that the, uh, cost of the public works employee's time?
No, no, Brett, what that was is, is we, we hadn't really thought this opportunity for the, for the sweeper had not come up when we did the budget because that was obviously last year sometime. And we had thought about that we needed to do this in 2021, but, but we just hadn't got there. This opportunity came up. What that number was for was contracting the small amount of, of, uh, um, of street sweeping that I put into memo.
Okay. And you mentioned, uh, for Loveland to, to do the service, it'd be 75 to a hundred thousand dollars.
Well, not Loveland. No, the, the, the current group that we contracted with.
Okay. Um, just, uh, where I'm going, my question is here is trying to understand the break even point. Um, so not counting the cost of the actual sweeper, how much, uh, what is the expense for us to, to do the street sweeping ourselves? Well, not, not the purchasing and the lease, but, but the maintenance and gas and employees' time and all that.
Correct. And that's the, that's the $32 per hour, uh, per hour of operation for the maintenance costs. Our, uh, public works employee numbers are not in there. I could add that in, but, but they, they're, they're, they're in the budget right now. I've got all those public works employees budgeted right now and the new person.
Okay.
Brett, I mean. Brett, I think he answered, I think you answered that earlier, Don. It's $6,400 a year.
Correct.
That was for the, the smaller amount of sweeping that we currently do, right? Not for.
No, that's, that's for the.
200, 200 hours. Yeah. That's sweeping all our streets three times. That, that's the, the 6,400. The one cost he doesn't have in there is the employee. I don't know if you threw that in, but.
It's in the, it's, it's already in our budget for the year.
Yeah, but just so, he's trying to compare apples and apples.
So, so we're, we're looking at breaking even contracting versus buying the sweeper and doing ourselves after four or five years. Is that?
Yeah, I, yeah.
Probably three years.
Yeah, it's more like, it's more like less than three years.
It's three years.
Yeah.
Okay. Uh, and then I guess just the one comment or question I'd raise, uh, regarding, uh, Councilmember Collins' point, uh, regarding buying versus leasing. I mean, I guess the only question I'd have is do we want to be careful with making a large expense right now, given the current economic climate? Or are we willing to, to stretch that out a little more? Just the, the question I would put for the council on that, on that point.
Good question. Um, Rick.
Yeah, I, I would just say that, uh, our sales tax revenue in January, February came in about 200,000 above what we thought it would be. Uh, we've got 2 million, I think it is, and I stand to be corrected if somebody wants to correct me. 2 million in for capital, uh, that's uncommitted and we've got an unreserved of 9 million. Uh, if I can save 10,000 or 11,000, I'll find out if I have to lease purchase it. I think it's a good deal.
Anybody else? So, uh, Rick, do you want to make a motion or amend the current motion of, uh, approving the per, well, it says approve the purchase of mechanical street sweeper.
Yeah, I would, I would offer a motion, amended motion to approve a purchase of the sweet sweeper. And my amendment would be to, uh, have it outright purchased and, uh, allow in the amendment, uh, Wes and his staff to figure out what line item budget that would come out of for the full amount.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Just, I know there's a lot of numbers. I'll, I'll reiterate one thing. So if we purchase, if we lease it, it's going to cost us 11,000 plus we pay 262 in January. If we purchase, we pay 262 now. So we basically save $11,000 for the town, yeah, on a lease versus purchase analysis. Okay, so I got first and a second. Um, roll call, please.
Mayor Pro Tem Erin Pearson.
Yes.
Councilmember Rick Collins.
Yes.
Councilmember Lisa Lake.
Yes.
Councilmember Brett Hanson.
Yes.
Mayor Mark Suker.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Great. Don, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Um, uh, Robert, we, we sort of talked about this at TDA, so I don't think you need to go to it at length. You know, maybe just introduce the, uh, resolution and let's go forward.
Uh, sure thing. Thank you, Mayor. This resolution, just like the TDA resolution would authorize electronic signatures and, uh, establishing related procedures on a permanent basis. The, uh, summary recommendation and, and key points are all identical to those that were included in the staff report for the, the TDA version of this resolution. So if there are any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Okay, no questions. Uh, could I have a, um, motion?
So moved.
Uh, second.
Number 34.
Uh, second.
Second.
Resolution 34, series 2020.
Second.
Okay, did you get that Melissa?
That was Erin.
Yeah, I meant, I said Melissa, did you get you? I'm sorry.
Yeah.
I'll go ahead and do a roll call.
Please do.
Councilmember Erin Pearson.
Yes.
Councilmember Rick Collins.
Yes.
Councilmember Lisa Lake.
Yes.
Councilmember Brett Hanson.
Yes.
Mayor Mark Suker.
Yes. Okay, it goes past unanimously. Um, next we have resolution 35, series 2020. Uh, Kevin, do you want to take over? And you're on mute. There you go.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I will also be sharing my screen, uh, for this, uh, just to give a context of where we're at. All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, this is a final plat proposal for 52 family attached, uh, feasible lots on roughly 10 acres located in the, uh, Timothée Landing subdivision. Uh, the owner is, uh, CAC Timothée LLC represented tonight by Michael Kirkendall. Uh, applicant is PCS Group, uh, represented tonight by John Presswich, who is also with us. Uh, the, uh, application, um, as I mentioned, is for 52 family attached lots, uh, to create, uh, paired homes. The single-family attached lots will range from roughly 2,300 square feet to 4,100 square feet in size, which meets the minimum lot size of 1,800 square feet. The single-family, uh, attached lots were reviewed against the R3 dimensional standards as per the land use code uh, for lots located in the residential mixed-use zoning district. Uh, the density for this proposal is roughly 5.2 dwelling units per acre, uh, which is within the maximum eight dwelling units per acre, uh, of the R3 zoning requirements. Uh, they are also proposing, uh, 4.8 acres of open space, park area and trail connections, which is included with this. Uh, that total, uh, equates to about 47% of the filing, which meets the minimum 20% of, uh, open space requirements of the land use code. Uh, and as you see on the screen, this is their approved sketch plan. Um, I've highlighted down in the bottom left corner, the red outline there is roughly the, uh, area that this, uh, filing is located in. Um, next one over here is the zoning map showing the location of this filing as well. Um, highlighted in red, um, within that RMU orange, uh, area there. Uh, and then this is the overall view of the plat, um, that's in location, um, with the plating there. And then, uh, the track that is, uh, dedicated for open space, uh, with trail connections. Um, and they have amenities, but then that. Um, and then this slide right here is the actual lotting plan. Um, that you can see the 52 single-family lots. Um, as Matt had mentioned earlier in, um, his, um, uh, community development report, uh, this, uh, this application did not meet, um, neighborhood meeting requirements as it had been in, uh, before the, um, the, uh, the requirement was actually made. And we actually do not require a neighborhood meeting for final plats. Um, uh, just because they are further along in the, um, whole review process. Uh, so this, this application did not require, uh, a neighborhood meeting. Uh, staff has reviewed this against, uh, the review criteria stuff, my code, uh, which have also attached in the staff report. Uh, it meets the lot sizes that, uh, that I, um, as I had mentioned, uh, it meets the comprehensive, uh, the comprehensive plan, the sketch plan, uh, the approved preliminary plat. It meets the density, uh, the lot with the minimum open space requirements. Uh, the park requirements, they are providing one pocket, pocket park with amenities. Um, as per requirements, they are providing, uh, park benches, bocce ball court, turf areas and trails. Uh, and, uh, they are also meeting technical standards outlined in the Lammer County Urban Area Street Standards. Uh, they are also complying with our drainage master plan, uh, grading. They are meeting utility requirements. Um, and then traffic as well. Um, staff recommends approval. And staff actually has, uh, made an additional requirement or condition of approval that will tie with this that I will read off. So we recommend approval with the condition of allow staff to work with the owner, applicant, dress, monitor, uh, modifications and comments prior to final signatures. And then, and then additional co, uh, condition is, uh, as a condition of approval, the Timothée Landing second filing, uh, the applicant in the town acknowledged that construction of the detention pond associated with the Timothée Landing first filing exposed groundwater as part of that construction. The applicant commits to a permanent solution so that the presently exposed groundwater will not be exposed on a permanent basis or applied to beneficial use for any purpose. The permanent solution will be constructed prior to the issuance of the first certificate of occupancy associated with the Timothée Landing second filing final flat. Uh, so that's an additional condition that we've added on since the packet was released. Um, and then with that, I will turn it over to, um, um, I have, I'll turn it over to John Presswich for, uh, the applicant's presentation.
John, if you're, if you're talking, you're on mute.
Can everybody see my screen?
Here it is.
Perfect.
Screen.
All right. Well, uh, good evening. Uh, John Presswich with PCS Group, uh, 200 Kalamath Street, Denver, Colorado, 80223. Uh, thank you, uh, for all of your time this evening. Uh, I always like to thank Matt and Kevin and, uh, all staff for, you know, helping us actually get here, uh, to this evening. So you know, uh, before I get into the presentation, I always think it's important to recognize that it really does take a team of professionals to help put together this application. Uh, the Timothée Landing project has been in planning for many years. And, uh, while some of the consultant teams, uh, includes more members that are on this particular slide, the team members on this slide were most heavily involved in this second final plat for Timothée Landing. Uh, this evening, we are here to request approval of a final plat for the 52 paired homes that Kevin mentioned. You know, there's some new people here and so I thought, uh, you know, it probably would make sense, uh, to give a little history of the actual project. Um, it has a pretty long history. Uh, you know, the initial planning for the property actually started back around 2008 or so. Went through several different iterations and in March of 2015, the planning commission recommended approval and town council unanimously approved the sketch plan for Timothée Landing. Uh, through May and July of 2015, the Timothée Landing team also presented a rezoning request, a comprehensive plan amendment and a PD overlay, all of which were unanimously approved by town council. The next big step for the project was in October of 2015, when planning commission recommended approval and town council unanimously approved the, uh, preliminary plat for Timothée Landing. And then the design team really spent the next couple of years working on the details and construction plans for the first final plat, which was unanimously approved in July of 2017. So that really brings us, uh, here tonight. And again, we're requesting approval of the second final plat for Timothée Landing. Uh, the preliminary plat for this exact area was unanimously approved by council in February of this year. And the final plat was just unanimously recommended for approval by planning commission in March. Uh, one of the things that I've heard this evening, uh, just kind of in watching the, the hearing is there was mention about neighborhood meetings. Um, I don't remember exactly how many neighborhood meetings we've had, uh, throughout this process, but I did want to let you know that we have had several neighborhood meetings as part of this long history, uh, in the project. So again, you know, there are some people here and I thought it might make, uh, you know, a little bit of sense, not to spend a lot of time on it, but to, uh, give, uh, a little background on the ownership team. Uh, Cattellus is a, a national real estate development company. They're based in Oakland, California. Michael's on the phone if he wants to add anything. I'm sure he'll be happy to. Uh, they have regional offices and operations nationwide. Um, they have worked with municipalities across the country and have really excelled in, in sort of public-private partnerships, acting as, uh, the master developer. Uh, they've got over 30 years of experience in creating mixed-use communities and they've been both the, uh, master developer, providing, uh, infrastructure to communities as well as in some cases actually doing the. as well as in some cases actually doing the vertical construction as well. So this slide depicts the approved, uh, sketch plan, you know, Kevin showed that as well. Uh, filing one that kind of popped up there in green is currently under construction. And filing two is our proposed area this for this evening. Uh, filing two is a portion of the mixed-use area, one from the sketch plan. And as staff noted, the, uh, proposal is in compliance with the sketch plan that was approved by planning commission and town council. Again, uh, staff also noted that the proposal meets the mixed-use designation and furthers the goals and policies of the comprehensive plan. I think most specifically the proposal adds additional housing options for the town. Uh, so this slide depicts the proposal for the fifty-two paired homes. Uh, the layout is an efficient extension of Second Avenue. Uh, it will provide access to other areas as well within the mixed-use area. Uh, the proposal includes landscape improvements adjacent to Harmony Road and includes a significant amount of landscape improvements around and even inside of the detention pond to create more of a visual amenity than just a, a standard utilitarian pond. The landscape treatment along Timothé Parkway is consistent with the treatment on the west side of Timothé Parkway in our filing one final plat to create a cohesive look along the new Parkway. Uh, this next slide really just zooms into some of the amenity areas along the detention pond. Uh, the design includes, uh, turf areas, some trail connections that the trail actually loops around the pond. Uh, pet stations and bench areas, there's also a centrally located bocce court. And then those two streets that come from the, uh, paired homes actually terminate on the turf areas. Uh, you know, the, the paired homes, I think, have an interesting design. Uh, you, you can see it here in the site plan and I also have, uh, some conceptual elevations. One thing that can be difficult with front-loaded paired homes is the street scape can become sort of garage dominated. And this layout alleviates that by having one of the garages side-loaded so that the garage doors do not dominate the street scape. So again, one of the garages faces the street and then the other one is perpendicular to the street. So our, our builder partner, David Weekly Homes, provided these architectural elevations. And again, from a, a site di- design perspective, I think the, the really interesting thing is how the homes sort of appear more like a, a larger single-family home with one garage siding to the street and the other one fronting to the street. And again, this is, uh, this, the site design and layout is the exact broken system with the preliminary plat. So that really wraps up our presentation. A, a couple of notes on the proposal, you know, again, it is within the Timothé Landing mixed-use area. Uh, it's consistent with the approved sketch plan. Um, the proposal has been reviewed by both the town and outside referral agencies. Uh, staff has recommended approval based on the review criteria. Planning commission and town council unanimously approved the preliminary plat. Uh, the extension of infrastructure in this, in this area will be beneficial to the rest of the mixed-use area. And finally, the proposal provides a unique housing product for the town of Timothé. Uh, with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions. Again, thank you for your time this evening. I don't know, Michael, if you wanted to add anything.
No, John, I, I think that's, this is Michael Kirkendall. Um, and John, I think that's a great overview and happy to answer any questions that council might have.
Anybody have any questions? Rick?
Yeah, I had a question for you. You might have mentioned it, I missed it. What do you hope to bring these homes in for? What kind of sale price or range?
Yes, the, the average square footage is, um, well, it, it starts at about fourteen hundred square feet up to just over two thousand. The, the smaller units will start in the low to mid threes and then it'll graduate from there.
That's great, great, good project.
Thank you.
Brian, do you want me to stop sharing my screen?
Yeah, that'd be great for what's there. Um, other questions? All right, hey, John, thanks for excellent presentation.
Thank you.
Um, do I have a motion for resolution thirty-five twenty twenty?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Uh, um, sir, excuse me, this mayor, this is a public hearing.
Yes.
Um.
Oh, we have that public comment, okay.
Yep, and there were none submitted, um, to us beforehand, which we had requested, but this still technically is a public hearing.
So Melissa, help me out. So I asked for public comments when there's no public comments or what do you want me to do?
You'll open the public hearing at seven seventeen and having no comments, you'll close it at seven seventeen.
Okay, what she said. So, uh, Kevin, are you good now?
Yeah, and, and, um, as, as I stated before, there is an additional, um, condition added on there. Um, so, um, Robert, correct me if I'm wrong, the, the motion would be, uh, whatever they have with the additional condition added on, is that correct?
Th- that's right, and just for the council's information that, that applicant and staff have discussed that condition and collaborated on it. So, uh, our understanding is the applicant is, is, uh, supportive of that condition.
Does everybody understand the condition then? I think you read it. Okay, so going, do I need to redo the first and second or are we good, Melissa?
If we can do redo it, I didn't quite catch the first time, so.
Okay, that's fine. Uh, so do I have a, uh, motion for resolution thirty-five twenty twenty to approve it?
So moved with the additional provision that, that the town staff has required.
Thanks, second?
Second.
Um, could Melissa, could you do roll call?
Yes. Mayor Pro Tem Aaron Pearson?
Yes.
Council member Rick Collins?
Yes.
Council member Lisa Lake?
Yes.
Council member Brett Hanson?
Yes.
Mayor Mark Suker?
Yes. Okay, um, moving on. The, um, I'm going to seven A. One of the things we've got is various assignments and, and one of the things that I'd like to see us doing forward is, is there's a lot of outreach that we're, we as a council are going to be doing. And so at the start of each meeting, when we have council reports, what I hope and, and encourage is that on these, um, groups that each of you will, um, be representing or as many as you want represent, that you come in and give us a report. Um, not too dissimilar to what, uh, Rick Collins did, um, earlier on the COVID, uh, um, committee that he's sitting on. Does that sound good to everybody? Okay, so first thing up is, uh, the mayor assigns, uh, the mayor pro tem, I didn't assign, nominates the mayor pro tem and then it's voted on by the council. First off, before I do that, Aaron, thanks for the awesome job you did. Um, I, I think we were lucky to have you for the two years and I know it took a lot of work and a lot of pencil pushing to sign all those checks. So I appreciate, uh, you doing that. My thoughts on this, on, on, and I don't know, you guys can have any idea, but I think every two, it implies in the town charter that every two years we, uh, sign a new mayor pro tem, um, or have a vote for a mayor pro tem, which to me implies a, um, changing of the guard each time. And so I'd like to nominate, uh, Rick Collins as mayor pro tem under the idea that he's the most senior member after Aaron. And, uh, and also I think he'll do an excellent job. So I'd like to nominate, um, Rick Collins. And at this point, do I, is, is this a motion, Wes? Do I ask for a second on it or what do we do? Would I ask for a second?
Yes, I would think so, and then you would take a roll call.
Okay, so do I have a second for that?
Second.
Okay, um, Melissa, will you do a roll call? Any discussion on that? Okay, Melissa, would you do a roll call?
Yeah, let, let me say something if I can.
Sure.
Uh, I'd like to first thank Aaron and let Aaron know that, uh, before he votes, I don't know how he's gonna vote, but before he votes, let him know that I appreciate what he's done as mayor pro tem. And him and I have had our differences, but I wanted him to know that it wasn't personal. It was just policy differences and I think those things can be worked out if we continue to, to work together. And I'm reaching out my hand to say I'll do everything I can to work with you and the other members and the mayor. So I appreciate if you'd support me.
Thanks, Rick. Um, any other comments? Okay, uh, Melissa, do you want to do a roll call?
Mayor Pro Tem Aaron Pearson?
No.
Council member Rick Collins?
Yes.
Council member Lisa Lake?
Yes.
Council member Brett Hanson?
Yes.
Mayor Mark Suker?
Yes. Uh, congratulations, Rick. Nice to have you as mayor pro tem.
Thank you.
The next, I'm gonna, there's, there's a list of, uh, these others items and I'm gonna just sort of identify them and see who would like to be the council representative. And then I don't think we need to have a vote, we'll just have a discussion amongst ourselves of, does that work and stuff? So I've got a different list and what's on here, so I'm going with my list so I can keep myself organized. So the first slides on I have is the N F R, uh, M P O. Um, Lisa has been involved with it in the past. Um, that I'll just throw it out, Lisa, are you interested in doing it, continuing on?
Um, it is something I'd be interested in. I only started doing it last summer, so I, I, you know, it took a few months just to kind of figure out what it was all about and, and things like that. But, um, I know I've spoken with you, Mark, that looking at the list there, um, there is another area that I have a stronger interest in, so I don't wanna take something away that somebody else may want instead. Um, but I'm certainly more than, um, happy to continue doing that. Um, yeah.
Okay, does anybody else like to be that liaison? So if everybody agrees, um, I would, uh, appoint Lisa to go ahead and do that, I guess it's the right way to say it.
So, uh, mayor, if, if, uh, I might, I, one way you could approach this is, is to just, uh, go through a list and, and if it sounds like everybody is, uh, is in, in agreement on all, all the items, you might just cover it all in one omnibus motion at the end of it. It just doesn't.
Thanks, Robert, for the help.
Sure.
Okay, um, next one, well, then I'm gonna go to the behavior health group, which, uh, again, Lisa's been involved with and, and, um, Lisa, do you wanna make a comment there?
Um, yeah, it's actually not one that I've been involved with, um, to date, I believe. Um, that Jill was on that one, but I don't think we had a strong presence. Um, my background is in public health and I've worked in substance use prevention and kind of that mental health area. So that's definitely one I would have a, um, a strong willingness to do out of all the ones listed.
Okay, anybody else have an interest in that? Okay, so Lisa, we'll put you down for that right now.
Thank you, you're a great choice for that.
Yeah, I mean, that's about as, as, as a solid, uh, setup as we can get there, Lisa. Um, NOCO Strong, um, who's, anybody have an interest in NOCO Strong?
Yeah, uh, mayor, that's, uh, I've been, I attended the last two meetings, of course, they're virtual. Um, and it's been interesting to watch how the communities are, are addressing their businesses and helping to, um, support them. So I would like to continue in that, in that role with NOCO Strong.
Great. Anybody else, or somebody's talking?
Uh, that's me, sorry, I just, I've noticed on your list here, there's a few different COVID committees. It might be worth at least a couple of seconds to describe what the difference between all these.
On NOCO Strong and.
It's NOCO Strong, I see a COVID nineteen response.
Sure. So, uh, since you've been involved, do you wanna just give a two-minute description of NOCO Strong, Aaron?
Sure will. Uh, NOCO Strong is, um, a staff member and either a council member or a, uh, or a mayor or mayor pro tem or a community development person from all of the surrounding communities. We get together for roughly an hour on, uh, Wednesday afternoons and discuss how ideas of how the different communities are addressing the needs of their small businesses, um, during this COVID, uh, crisis for them, uh, while they're shut down. It's in, uh, it's been interesting to see how they're doing it. The, the NOCO Community Foundation is also on there, um, acting as a leader to, uh, help, help people with ideas and, and, uh, and maybe some, uh, criteria to help decide what kind of, um, what kind of aid can be given to these different businesses.
Great, so carrying on with what you just asked, I think we'll just go through each one of them and then come back. So, um, uh, COVID legislation liaison, uh, Rick, I know you've been involved a little bit on that, can you describe it?
Yeah, that's just if there's any legislation on that and it's dealing with right now, it's just more informational, uh, just letting us know what's going on and I'll be glad to just, to keep monitoring that.
Um, Wes, I'm gonna have you help on a couple of these, uh, the C M L, um, do you want to discuss it?
Sure, C M L Policy Committee is, um, because we are members obviously of the Colorado Municipal, I'm sorry, I've got these acronyms too. So for, if anybody wants to, uh, uh, raise their hand or poke, I'm glad to, you know, it's kind of jargon. So it's the, uh, Colorado Municipal League, um, and it's, uh, just that. It's the municipal league for all of the towns and cities, um, in the state. So, uh, one of the committees they have is a policy committee and what they do is they get, excuse me, they meet, I don't know, four or five times, uh, in the fall prior, um, uh, as the legislature is ramping up and actually, uh, I'm sorry, late fall and then through the spring typically. Um, and so as bills come up, um, the C M L staff explains the bills and explains, um, what a position support or a, uh, position to oppose or to, you know, um, to oppose with conditions or those kind of things. So they vet basically the legislation that might have a potential impact on, uh, Colorado towns and municipalities. They invite, um, towns, uh, in cities to have a representative there. And so you can have a designated one or in an alternate one. A lot of times when I've been involved, there's been a council person or a mayor assigned as the primary and then a staff person as secondary. Sometimes it, there's just staff, um, that attends and then updates the council about potential legislation that may, uh, impact the community.
Okay, thanks.
Mayor, that's one I'd be in, yeah, that's one I'd be interested in too.
Okay.
If you need additional bodies.
Great, I, what I'm gonna do is just get descriptions and I'm gonna come back through and ask who, who's interested and we can talk. Um, but I'm, I'm trying to answer Brett's question. Uh, Blammer County Transportation Committee, uh, again, Wes?
Um, so I, I do not have as much familiarity with this particular transportation committee. Um, I believe there's some over, and, uh, maybe, uh, Councilman Lake can, uh, can chime in too. I believe there's a, some overlap between the M P O, um, as well as the Transportation Committee. This one, the Transportation Committee is specific to Laramore County where the M P O is actually broader. It extends all the way up, uh, all the way by twenty-five from probably just, uh, from probably birth that I think is kind of what that lines at on the M P O all the way up, uh, past Port Collins to Wel- uh, to the edge of Wellington. The Transportation Committee is uniquely just that for Laramore County. It's getting the municipalities to the table to talk about, uh, regional impacts, regional solutions. If people are taking on projects, um, how do they coordinate? Uh, they pursue a lot of grant funding particularly at the federal level. So it's one of those kind of things. You don't have to have a, a, uh, uh, council member, um, designated. Uh, we do have a staff person, I think it's Eric Furman, who's in this case is, uh, the, the liaison there. But, um, there are, there are community representatives there and if the council, uh, feels strongly about it, we can certainly attach one to this one.
Okay, and then.
Mayor, mayor, this is Rick. Mayor, this is Rick, this is one we're gonna have to track real closely because with the COVID-19 and what's happened with the barrel of gasoline or with barrels of oil, our revenues are dropping like a rock in terms of the gasoline taxes and the transportation per funds. So it's gonna impact the whole front range along that quarter.
Okay, thanks, Rick. And then the last liaison and I've got it on my list, I'm not sure, is, is the Pooter River Heritage Alliance on your list, Wes?
Yes, sir, it is.
Okay. And again, do you want to talk about that?
Actually, let me do this, let me have Matt talk just a little bit about it because he actually knows more about it than I do. I know that there was a reach out to you about having a council member attend, but Matt's probably a little, he's been our staff person assigned to that and I probably would be speaking on a turn.
Okay, Matt, take it away. Just gives a two-minute idea so we, we know. And, and let me tell you how this got here, was I got a email from their chairman saying that they'd like a councilperson on their Pooter River Heritage Alliance. So that's how this came about, I don't think we've been involved with them before.
Actually, we, we have been involved with it for the past year or so. Our planning commission chair was, we brought forward as the liaison for the, Phil Goldstein for the, for the town and he's been on that, on that board, so. But the purpose of the heritage area is, you know, promoting historical and cultural opportunities along the Pooter River, engaging people in the river corridor, inspiring learning, preservation and stewardship. So it's, it's, since we have the Pooter River as a anchor to the town, it's a pretty significant regional and amenity, this is an opportunity to be engaged in those conversations as to what, how the, how things develop along the river and, you know, keeping the river as a vital part of the community.
Okay, great, thanks, Matt. Okay, so here's, here, you know, we're, we're just gonna discuss here for a little bit. What I think I'll do is go through each one and see who has an interest and then we can discuss reallocating afterwards. So I sort of started that way, so NFR MPO, Lisa expressed an interest, Behavior Health Group, Lisa expressed an interest and then we got, then we started going through it after Brett's question, so wait, NOCO Strong, Aaron expressed an interest. Did, but I don't know if I asked if there was anybody else that had an interest. Okay.
CML, right, I think Councilman Collins expressed an interest in the CML policy one, is that correct?
Yeah, just going through it, Wes, oh, just that. So next one, CML, so CML, Rick, you have a interest in that?
Yeah, with Wes, I think that would be good because that deals with what's coming down the road legislatively before the start of the session and then how it's shaking out at the end.
Does anybody else have an interest in that? Okay. COVID legislation lies on that, wait, that was you, Rick. Laramie County Transportation Committee. Anybody have an interest in that?
Mayor, I would have an interest if there's like an overlap with the MPO. But if we already have a staff member going, maybe there's a way to get updates from them as far as what's going on. I don't know necessarily that we need to have more than one person there.
Wes?
No, no, sir, I don't disagree, I, I think staff goes and then reports back as things have an impact on us.
Who's our staff person there?
I believe it's Eric Furman, if I, if I recall.
That's correct, Wesley, I have, I have participated in that a couple of times over the last couple of years, but Eric is doing a fine job with that.
Okay, great, and so Eric, I don't think he's on this, but in the future, anytime that, that we have a meeting, then they've had a meeting, if he would give us a quick update of how that's going along and if we need any help with it and stuff, okay, Don?
Yep, absolutely, I'll, Eric and I talk about each one of those scintillating meetings that he goes to every time, so I'll, I'll pass that along.
And then, okay, Pooter River Heritage Alliance, does anybody have an interest in that? Don't all speak up.
If we need somebody, I can, I can help out with that.
Okay, great, thanks.
Mayor, I was also gonna say, I think it was mentioned that Phil also goes to those as a planning commission member as well, and I just looked on their website, his picture's on there too, part of the group, so.
I think it'd be good if we had a councilperson on it first off and then second, and that's what they requested was a councilperson, they didn't really ask for a second choice. So if Brett's interested, I think that's how I'd like to go, you know, but you guys are gonna decide that. So.
I can, I can, I can help out with that, and I would also say if there's any additional help needed on the CML Policy Committee, I'd be, you know, if I break it to backup or something like that, I would be willing to look at that as well.
Which one, I'm sorry, Brett, I couldn't.
CML Policy Committee.
Okay. Okay, so I'm, Robert, I'm gonna do your suggestion and bring these all together as one motion, so you guys, but I'm just talking now before I, go ahead, Lisa.
I'm sorry, Mayor, but on the, the agenda, there's also the Timnith Foundation is listed, which wasn't mentioned and it does have a requirement of a mayor. So that's yours definitely, and then also council member appointed by council as well, is how it's listed in our agenda, so I don't know. I think Aaron's been going so far, I don't know if he can share a little bit about that, but that one's just listed as well.
And so I was gonna hit it 7B, but that's okay, we can bring that as part of this whole, whole motion and Aaron, I, are you interested in continuing on?
Yes, I would, I would be happy to continue on in that role.
Okay. So, all right, I'm gonna take a shot at, and great, thanks, Lisa, you, we can put it on this and it works probably better. So I'm gonna make a motion. Robert, why don't you sort of gather this up and then you could repeat it out, so it's in the way that we should do. NFR MPO, we have Lisa as our liaison. I'll go Timnith Foundation, myself and Aaron will be the liaison. Behavior Health Group, Lisa will be the liaison. NOCO Strong, Aaron will be the liaison. Pooter Heritage Alliance, Brett will be the liaison. COVID legislature, legislation, Rick will be the liaison to get us back info. And then CML, Rick, and if he needs someone to help with that, Brett.
Mark, put Brett on that with Wes.
Okay.
I would recommend Brett and Wes.
Okay, are you okay with that, Brett?
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay.
And then what I'll do, if it's all right with you, Mr. Mayor, is the Laramie County Transportation Committee, if Eric wants a council member to tag along, I'd be glad to do it.
Excuse me, Mayor, this is Matt Blakely, the, the, the MPO requires, oh, the, the Laramie County requires a elected official is what they're telling me.
For the Transportation Committee?
I'm the messenger in this case.
For the Transportation Committee?
Transportation Committee, yes.
Yeah, I'll go on to that and then have Brett do the CML, I've done legislative things all my life.
Okay, that's awesome. So, did you get all that down, Robert?
Mayor, I confess that I, I didn't, would, would you mind just taking it from the top? I'm sorry.
Yeah, my list is different than what's on there, so I'm sorry, I made my list at the initial and, and Wes tried to throw me a curve and shuffle it. So, I'll go slow, NFR MPO, Lisa. Timnith Foundation, myself and Aaron.
Right.
Behavior Health Group, Lisa. NOCO Strong, Aaron. Pooter River Heritage Alliance, Brett. COVID legislation liaison, Rick. And CML, Rick. And whoops, and Laramie County Transportation, wait, I got that wrong, didn't I? So I'll be Brett. Laramie County Transportation Committee will be Rick.
Correct.
You get it, Robert?
I did.
Would you mind then repeating the motion for, or stating a motion for me and, and then we'll go?
Sure, so the proposed motion would be to appoint Councilmember Lake as the MPO liaison. Council, Councilmember Pearson and, and Mayor Suker as the Timnith Foundation Liaison. Councilmember Lake is the Behavioral Health Liaison. Councilmember Pearson is the NOCO Strong Liaison. Councilmember Hanson as the Pooter River Heritage Alliance Liaison. Mayor Pro Tem Collins as the COVID Legislation Liaison. Councilmember Hanson is the CML Legislative Liaison and Mayor Pro Tem Collins as the Laramie County Transportation Committee Liaison.
Great, do I have a motion for that too?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Would you do a roll call, Melissa?
Yes. Mayor Pro Tem Rick Collins.
Yes.
Councilmember Aaron Pearson.
Yes.
Councilmember Lisa Lake.
Yes.
Councilmember Brett Hanson.
Yes.
Mayor Mark Suker.
Yes. Great, thanks, thanks everybody for volunteering. I think, you know, we're trying to get all of us involved and, and create that and so I'm excited all of yesther stepped up and can do it, thank you. Wes. Council retreat discussion, maybe, I think everybody saw it and stuff, maybe you can do the short, short, shorthand version, but enough to make sure we got what we need to know.
Yes, sir, I'm glad to do that, did you want to tackle the committees as well?
Yeah, that's right, the committees are right there, sorry. So I, I'm gonna suggest three committees and I, and the three committees, well, actually, so two are permanent committees, one's a finance committee. My experience on any organization I've ever had is a finance committee to oversee the finances and act as a direct liaison with the auditing firm and the CPA firm. So that'll be its purpose. It will also have, in a short term, the purpose of helping us look and refinance our debt and see we've got the debt where it needs to go and where it needs to be and also take a look of, should we be borrowing money as opposed to entering into financing leases? So that's sort of the, one of the charges I think we'll have. The second one is one suggested by Aaron Pearson, which is a Parks, Open Space and Reservoir Committee. And and back there, and do you want to spend a minute or so sort of explain the concept of that on what you had in mind?
I thought it would be a, a good chance for members of the community, I know there's quite a few that are involved, especially out of the reservoir or have strong opinions on parks or equestrian trails that could be happening in the future. So I thought this would be a great opportunity to create a committee to get more public input. We talked quite a bit about this at the, when we did the comprehensive plan update with a number of the members on there that were interested in this. So I think that it would be beneficial for the town to get lots of different ideas so that as we move forward with land acquisition for future parks or protecting some of our, our equestrian type trails through the, through different communities as a community separator. I think this would be a great way to address some of those concerns and ideas that different members of the community have.
Great, good comments. And then the last one is, is a committee, there'll be an ad hoc committee, it won't be a continuing because what it's, once it gets through with its mission, it'll naturally dissolve out and that's the Metro District Commission, which is, will be charged with taking a look at the metro districts, sharing their in compliance, assuring that, that members are from the, that the residents are, do have membership in its boards and, and then make a report at the end of their review on the, their satisfaction of how the metro district is operating. Brett, do you want to make any additional comments or thoughts on that?
Yeah, it's just, yeah, the way I see some of the main objectives of this committee is being, yeah, to first review the, the service plans, the, the rules of metro districts are operating under. I'd also like to have a little bit of community outreach to find out what questions and concerns the public has to help us as part of reviewing those rules and the creation of any future metro districts. And then, yeah, I want to, I want to facilitate and empower residents to, to be able to serve on metro district boards. I think a lot of the frustrations will improve as more and more residents are involved in that process.
Great, thanks, I think all of us that campaigned this time, Brett, Lisa and I heard a, and it probably always is, an outreach of people wanting to be involved and being included in town government in some way. And so I think this is trying to move in that direction of getting more people involved in the various operations of the town and, and get us more input and understanding and I think both Brett and Aaron stated that well when they commented on, on theirs. So, yeah, go ahead, Aaron.
Mark, I was just hoping to make a suggestion, sort of a, a best practice to, to, with, when forming these committees, to send out a public invitation for people to fill out applications for the committees and then, and then we as a council can look through those applications, do some interviews or have staff do some interviews and then bring back a suggested roster for those, for those committees.
Excellent, I, go ahead, Lisa.
I would second what Aaron just said there and then also however we do it, it's really come up with a very clear purpose of what each of those groups will be. I know especially a metro district one, there's, a lot of that is defined by state law. And I think we just want to be cognizant of, of what we as a municipality can and cannot do and just make sure that we're clear when we're inviting community members to be a part of it so that they kind of know what their expectations would be as a member of the group.
Okay, great.
Mayor?
Yes.
So with one suggestion, the staff could take your input tonight that you've given us as far as I think your key points in each of these areas and we could, I think it's important that we come up with a resolution and some sort of document that kind of spells out the role and purpose and then bring that back for you guys to look at and just make sure that we're aligned, that we're capturing what your heartbeat is and, and what your vision is for, for these committees and you can mark them up, you can say, no, you're close or you're way off or add this or subtract this, but at least it'll be the starting point of, 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 of kind of forming up what these committees are. I think it's important that we set a good precedent and so this may take a little bit of iteration for us to kind of form it up. And then at that point, if it's still council's direction to staff, we can certainly go out and solicit invitations to. And then at that point, if it's still councils' direction to staff, we can certainly go out and solicit invitations to, for people to apply to this, much like we do the planning and zoning. So if you think that, that's amenable, staff can take our cues and then bring back to you at a meeting in May, some concept ideas about what these committees might look like. And then you, again, of course, mark them up, edit them, those kinds of things. And we'll, we'll refine it to a place where you get everybody comfortable. I would anticipate there being a resolution or, or an ordinance, I would defer to Robert's office on that on how that's administratively handled. But you would adopt that and then those become a part of your, your framework here. And then at that point, then we can go to the, to the community with a little clear expectation about what we're recruiting for, for lack of a better word.
And that's exactly what I was going to suggest is that we come back, that Robert come back with organization rules for each of the committees, which includes how memberships identified, you know, how many council members, if more than one. Can there be, is there flexibility with how many council members are on it? Is there flexibility with the size of the committee? And, and how, how they're, how they're nominated? And then the voting procedure on the council on how to put them there and then replace it. I think Aaron suggested once that it'd be something similar to what goes on with the PNC board and people applying for that. So I think all of that, hopefully, Robert can maybe capsulize and then next meeting, we can sit back and discuss it.
I'm going to encourage him not to start with a blank piece of paper.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
I think now we may have to on the, on the metro district one, although I'm going to defer to him and his group, they certainly have their expertise there. But on the other ones, I think there's some ones that we can borrow, steal, plagiarize, or somehow at least start with other than just complete white sheet of paper. And I think that's a great point for us and to bring back to you guys and you guys can modify or, or do as you so.
Absolutely. Yeah. I mean, I, I was shocked. We don't have a finance committee coming in, quite frankly. So it's, there's got to be one on every single town. I'd be shocked that there's not. So.
Well, thank you. I think that's pretty good direction for staff and we'll, we'll try to get back something to you just as soon as we possibly can.
Awesome. Now, council retreat discussion.
Yes, sir. I'll make this real quick. I included the information in the packet. This is a really, this is a great practice for councils to huddle up, you know, especially after an election and just kind of build, do some team building, some networking and then to establish just some expectations out loud and then to start setting priorities, goals, create, you know, or affirm or your vision or or create your new vision, whatever that looks like. So anyway, to that end, I've got in your packet a, a recommendation with Julia Novak. She's very familiar to Colorado. I think if you look through her bio, she's done a number of of cities and towns, not just in Colorado, but all over the nation. So most recently in Fort Collins, the Deer Retreat. Adams County, Loveland, there's a number, she's done work in Windsor. So anyway, is with your permission, I'll engage her. Then she, she's very hard to come by. So the only date I have for the next couple of months is May 29th and May 30th. And I think the expectation would be like the afternoon, evening of the 29th, not, not the full day, just a partial kind of late afternoon, evening, and then all day on Saturday, I think at this point. She would also be reaching out to council in advance of this and kind of doing interviews to kind of get your, your passion or areas of concern or just areas of interest or or just your thoughts about what you'd like to see accomplished and, and where you'd like to see the board go in the next couple of years. She'll also be doing that with the executive team as well. And so then she would bring all that together. I'm at the council retreat. Susan's been gracious enough to help me. We're looking at using the Colorado Youth Outdoor Sports Program right, just right outside of town here. They have a conference facility that some of their, our neighbors like Windsor's have used and highly recommend. So with your permission, I'll set that up if you will block those dates off your calendar.
Excellent. The only thing I'll add is that, that the minutes for that will be public record. And so this is, this is a meeting that is definitely open.
Yes.
As far as the reporting of it.
Yes, sir. Okay.
Now, Lisa, live streaming council meetings. So do we need to this, what, Wes, help me out here. Do we need to discuss this? Is this a motion we should make? How would you like, how should we proceed with this?
I don't necessarily need a motion, Mayor. The financial amount falls within my purview. And as long as I have your, everybody's consent, I'm good with that.
Can we just do sort of a yeah, that makes sense from everybody. Okay. Looks like I'm getting Brett. Okay. We got thumbs up on it.
Sounds great. Sounds great.
Yeah.
Thank you for setting time aside to do this.
Absolutely. Town events. I think, Kim, I don't know if you've made it this long, but I think we finally got to you. Kim, why don't you introduce yourself real quick? For, I'm not sure, Brett, have you ever met Kim?
Uh, yes, I believe so.
Okay. Okay. Well, maybe if everybody's met you, Kim, you don't need to introduce yourself, but go ahead. Make your.
Wonderful. I can jump in, but I see Wes trying to catch my eye real quickly. Okay. I didn't know if you wanted to go back to the live stream or the council meeting at all.
We'll pick up 7D just a minute if you need to.
Did I skip again?
Okay. Go ahead. If you're okay, Mayor, we got, you don't mind, we'll just go ahead and roll and come back to that if you're okay, sir.
Are you ready to fire me yet? I thought 7D was live streaming council meetings.
It is.
That's what we just did a thumbs up on.
Okay.
I, I was told that we didn't need a motion and all we needed is an agreement that we wanted you to proceed and we did that.
Then that's my fault, sir. I understood that to be for 7C, not 7.
Yes, 7D dog. Live streaming council meetings, we all gave a thumbs up to. Is that not what you wanted?
Did you need any additional information? Brian was prepared to talk about what he could do and what he has actually found out in the initial stages of this. Or do you just want us to bring you back something for your consideration at a future meeting?
Can, well, I think it's pretty unanimous. We all want it to happen. Is there a decision mode that needs to be up made beyond that?
So I tell you what we'll do. We'll bring you back two or three options for your consideration at the next meeting. How's that?
Okay. That sounds great.
Okay.
See, I'm not totally incompetent.
That was my, that was mine.
I was on point. 7D. Cam, take it over.
Wonderful. Thank you all, Mayor and Council for letting me join you virtually today. I wish it was in person, but this, this will do just fine. And really, I wanted to have a conversation today around our events, but more specifically some of the direction and changes we need to make as a result of the COVID-19 pandemic. And we are scheduled to have a broader conversation at your next council meeting about communications and events in general. And looking at our program, our strategy, our messaging, some of the major projects that we have highlighted for this upcoming year. So I don't want to go down that path tonight. But tonight I really do want to talk about some decision points that we need from you as council members. And because if we're going to make any changes to schedules or event details or even cancellations, those are things that we need to do in the coming weeks to make sure that we are ahead of the game and of course, not doing these things last minute. So in your packet, you saw a quick summary of some of the key decision deadlines that we need to discuss tonight. You also saw a lot of event detail that is really more for context than anything else. But what I was hoping to do is get some direction today on, on some of these pending events and your thoughts on changes to schedules, programming, or even cancellations due to the COVID outbreak.
So here's how, and Kim, you, I want you popping in all along as we go through this and stuff. So here's what I thought we'd do. What I, what? Let's start big picture before we ever get to any of the specifics. To me, we've got a lot of info on cost and everything else. I think the real key is safety. You know, what, what should we be doing from a safety standpoint first? And then once we determine what we should be doing from a safety standpoint, then make a decision on what guidance we give to staff as to putting out money for any of these events. So that we're just not wasting money. I mean, if we're going to do the event, great. But if, if we see as so many communities have done, either postpone or eliminate events, probably the last one that's close by is Greeley Stampede. What we should do. So as just a general statement, is everyone feel good about sort of taking a look at this from a safety standpoint first and then go back in and drill a little harder? So I'm going to go through it item by item and, and see if we get a consensus. And then Robert, I'm going to come back to you and ask you for a motion that's very similar to what we did with the liaison of identifying, because I think each one of these, it's going to have a different aspect or stuff is my guess, but I don't, I don't know. So the first, yes, yes.
I just want to add one other thought to the, the general high level view. I think it's important to keep in mind that nobody in this meeting is a infectious disease specialist. So I think when we're looking at safety, we defer to the state and county regulations. And I don't think we look for a reason to go beyond what, what their suggestions are.
Agree. So the first comment, the first thing we've got is cleanup day. And Wes, I think you, for me, and just sort of passing that we could do cleanup day without having anybody be unsafe, that, that town staff could be protected and stand back and we provide the canisters and the, and the trash containers for people and that, that was something that we could do from a staff standpoint, from a safety side too. I.e. by safety, Brett, less than 10 people there, we'd have some kind of traffic control to make sure there's not 20 people gathered around the containers and those kind of things.
That's correct. Largely be self-serve, Mayor. So I mean, we would be on site, making sure nothing got a little crazy. But it would largely be people coming up and, and in a line, a controlled atmosphere and then doing their own dumping and then us just hauling away the, the.
So the recommendation of staff is to go and continue and have it on May 16. So just comments, what's, what's people think? Yeah, Lisa.
Uh, yes, Mayor. My husband and I actually dropped off multiple loads last year. And I feel like from that standpoint, like Wes mentioned, there's usually cars going through. It's not usually big gatherings of people or anything like that. People, staff are there to direct where to go, where to drop things off. But I feel like just my experience in the past years of going there, it's kind of already in place where there's not a lot of direct contact with people from, from that standpoint.
Okay. Mayor, this is Rick. If we, I think it's a good idea to go ahead with this thing, but we need to make sure that we get enough canisters and dumpsters there. Last year they had to close up a little early, I believe.
Okay, good comment. Yeah, so it's popular. Aaron?
Yeah.
Yes, I, I've had a number of residents already asked me if this was going to happen or be rescheduled. So I think we should move forward. Is this something that in the did, did people have to provide their ID to be able to use this? Or did people just go on the honor system that they worked in with residents?
Well, that's a great question.
So my understanding is they have, and in conversation with some of our other vendors, what we talked about doing is if they could provide it like through the window, but we weren't gonna we were going to try to keep a distance. So we're, we're going to be, it's going to be a lot more on the honor system than what it has been in the past. So I mean, if we seen the same person 14 times with three different trailers, we probably weren't going to ask for some, some ID, but you know, yeah.
It just, just a suggestion, would this be something that people could show their tin that red reservoir pass that gets sent to everybody in the mail? As sort of proof of residency or, or do you think it's not necessary? If it's not necessary, let's not have somebody out there.
Some people might not know where there's our, Aaron.
They could use an electric bill or water bill.
Just thinking, Lisa.
Yeah, a water bill or electric bill would do it too.
Kim, I think we're, you've got some ideas here. Why don't you just apply them? And I, what it sounds like to me is all of you feel to accept the recommendation of staff for cleanup day. Which is hold.
Right.
Yes.
Okay, I'm going to skip, I'm going to go low hanging fruit first and then we'll go if there's, I don't know if we're going to have a discussion or not, but I've got a low hanging fruit first. So Taste of Timna and Holiday Lighting are both far enough in the future that we won't incur any costs until I think July 21st. So, and maybe this begs another question. I would think we'd want to defer having to make a solid decision on any of these until we get to that, that period where Laramore County or the state or whoever says, here's the rules at this time. And then we're going to have to project out what we think they'll be in the future. But at this point, it, we don't have to incur anything, any costs. So my, my two bits again is that if we can put those two off, not canceled, just postponed, I mean, don't even postpone. We just keep them on the schedule just like they are. Does, comment.
I agree.
Okay, I agree.
All right, then let's go to a harder, maybe easier one, and that's summer barbecue. And this, the, this was scheduled for June 5th. And staff is recommending, which is sort of a cool thing anyway. And that is that the inauguration of the big park coincide with the summer barbecue. And that we do that. And I think we've got till June 5th to, before we have to start incurring some significant, we've already incurred 3,000 or what is it? Yeah, 5,000, but incur any more additional costs. Comments?
I agree.
I, I'm good with waiting until we have some clarity. That's still a month and a half roughly. So things are changing quickly. I think we could wait on that. We've already incurred costs.
Yeah.
One way or the other.
Okay, great. Okay. Next one's a harder one, I think. Community Park Concert Series. So they're scheduled for June 18th, July 16th, August 20th. Just making comments. Our final cancellation date's 5/18. So we will have a meeting on 5/14. Am I, is that the right date, Wes?
Uh, 12.
So we will have a meeting on 5/12. So we could delay, well, Kim, you help me here. Can we delay the decision on June 18th concert?
We can. And I think looking at what we have done so far in terms of saying Ju- June events. Let me put it this way, a lot of communities are canceling June events. And so our recommendation was to cancel.
And so, our recommendation was to cancel the June concert and delay your decision on July and August.
Com- comments?
I think that's a smart recommendation.
I agree with Rick.
Lisa?
I I agree as well. Is there, is there an opportunity to add one towards the end, like um early September so that we still do the three? I know we don't wanna go too far into September because it starts to get dark by the time they're ending, but um would that be something that we could possibly do as well, which still extends when we have to make a decision for that July one?
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm. We'll look into that, Lisa, but I imagine we can find something.
We do have the Taste of Timneth in September already, so we'll just wanna keep that in mind.
Yeah, good point.
Yeah, cuz the Taste of Timneth, which will have a concert and stuff, will be September twenty-six, Lisa. So, I mean, with with that being identified, do you still think we should see if we can do three?
With canceling the June one as well, cuz I I think that one's just too soon to make a, have to make a decision now, so I think that's fine too.
Okay. All right, here's the hard one, July fourth. Greeley's already canceled their July fourth. Um, we've already spent, just a second, we've already spent thirty-one thousand on uh fireworks and we, and and we'll be paying the second chunk, thirty-one thousand uh here July eleven, or excuse me, May eleven. Um I'd like, I and and this goes probably more back to your comment, Brett, you know, that I think the first key is, is can we have a safe Fourth of July? And there's lots of ideas I think we all could sit there and throw out. And secondly, do we keep it on Fourth of July? Um, do we move it to maybe the summer barbecue where things will get cleaned up and straightened out, and we are allowed in our contract to do that. Um, and not lose any any uh money on it. Again, I don't wanna make this a money decision. I just want it to be a safety decision, as you identified various correctly, Brett, I'm not a uh, what is it, what's a guy that's uh an IST that is a disease person, but I'm not. And I don't, as you said, no one here is, so it, but we, but we're the ones who are stuck coming up with the decision, so comments.
Yeah, let me ask him if this is possible, to even look at putting it on Labor Day that weekend. So, you move it all the way to September?
Right. We certainly can move the fireworks date. And there's a couple of parameters around what that could be, but um we can move that that date it into a later time within six months of July fourth. So, whether that's Labor Day, whether that's at the holiday lighting, whether that's um at the rescheduled summer barbecue in August, we can move the the show um to coordinate with sort of whatever we think is most appropriate.
Yes, Aaron.
Uh, what what do people think about the idea um of canceling the festivities of the Fourth of July, but keep the fireworks show in place? I know at least down here in Timneth Ranch, there's a a majority of people that watch from their homes, Ti- Timneth Ranch North has a great view. Um, I know there's been quite a few people that watch it, including myself, on Mount Timneth at the community park. Uh, obviously, most of the Harmony people can see it from their residences, same with Saratoga and Wildwing. Um, so I I'd like to throw that out there for discussion.
Great. Uh, Lisa, did you have something? I'm sorry.
Um, yeah, but I I think we could go back to kind of uh what Aaron's saying first, that we can talk about that part first.
Yeah, what uh along with what Aaron's saying, Aaron, the only thing I would be concerned about is we need to know what Windsor's gonna do as well. Cuz if they cancel theirs, it'll drive people towards this one. And we do get tons of people walking out on the golf course in huge groups and sitting on each tee box.
Okay.
And I know in uh Kim's pack, and I think she talked about if they drive into the lockdown there, that they might have to sit in their car. We all know that's really tough to do if it's a hundred degrees out.
Right.
Brett?
Um, just brainstorming, this isn't an action item, we'd have to really take a, tonight, obviously, but um, one possibility would be to loosen our town regulations this year on home fireworks, something more like what Loveland does. Uh, let people have some of their own sparklers or whatever from their own homes, and that'd be a way for people to still have fireworks if we do have to move or cancel or just just a thought or a question to put out there or something to look at.
Can we do that, Brett? I mean, I don't know, can we, can we have sparklers and stuff? That's not us.
Right, right now, we we match what Fort Collins does, and we can't do anything except like the little noise poppers you throw on the ground, but
Yeah.
Loveland, they're they're will let you do the little little fountains and the sparklers and um I think it'd just be at least worth exploring.
I thought in the past, we've been allowed ground um ground fireworks. I have personally had them, but I know I know that some of the neighbors have done, I don't know if it's legal, but I have done
I personally, it wasn't, but I don't know.
Hey, Terry, are you still on?
Yes, yes, I am.
Hey, could you, could you comment on on our regulations for fireworks?
From what I under- uh, from what, from what I understand, um, they are limited at best, we try to comply with state law, and state law is a bit nebulous because in the unincorporated portions of the county, they're still permitted. So, from a law enforcement aspect, we would try to take a very soft approach to individuals. Cruise the area, put up signboards, indicate that fire fireworks are not permitted. And then deal with the individuals that set them off on a case-by-case basis.
Let me flip it the other way, though. Can we uh staying with, I think Brett's, Brett, what Brett was approaching it was a little bit different. Can we, as a town, say, we're going to allow this, 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 and this? Um, and and not make it a, you have to turn your back and pretend you didn't see it to it's okay because we, as a town, approved it.
I think I'd have to defer to Mr. Rogers on this one.
Yeah, and and I I should step in here. Um, thi- this is one of those areas where it it's a mixed local and state concern. So, there are both local regulations that would include the towns, as well as county regulations, as well as state regulations, and whichever regulation is the most stringent would control. So, i- it's it's a nice idea, but I think that the likelihood of both the county and the state relaxing their regulations enough to to let residents uh enjoy their own fireworks in a meaningful way is uh is gonna be a question mark right up till the fourth.
Why, why would it be a question mark up to the fourth? I don't understand that.
Well, I mean, the ta- the town could, the town could lift its regulations, but unless all three governing entities um uh li- lift their regulations enough, you're you're still gonna be running into restrictions.
So, here was the question, Robert, though, is Brett, I'm not trying to put words in your mouth, Brett, but let me see if I understood your question. Brett's saying that, hey, that that Lemer County rules allow ground fireworks and that, and Lisa's
I know Loveland does.
Or Loveland does, which would be Lemer County then too. Um, and which is a higher standard than what we've done in Timneth in the past. Can we go ahead and adopt the same concept that Loveland has? Uh, which would have to be in compliance with Lemer County um and do that?
Y- the the answer is yes, the town can loosen any restrictions that it has. I I I'm just um suggesting that that if if there is a big movement toward uh people having fireworks shows that they're at on their on their blocks, and there's more of a local grassroots effort, I I'm just suggesting that I I think that you may not see as looser restrictions out of these other governing entities as as we're anticipating. But yes, the town can lift its restrictions.
I think the key, maybe what we need, Terry, you're probably the best person, cuz you'd have to enforce what's there. Would you mind coming back on May twelfth and tell us what uh, what what we can do here on the upper end, not the lower end. And not that we're gonna do it, but it'd be nice to have true information so that um we can make a good decision on Brett's suggestion of of, you know, loosen that up to make it up.
Now, I will say, um, our, I'm sorry, Aaron, I was just going to add, our event team has um told us that if we want to have an event that has been similar to past July fourth events, so the music, the kids' activities. And this was the first year we were actually going to add beer in, back into the event. That liquor license is due at the end of this week. And so, we do need a decision from you all tonight as to whether or not we submit that liquor permit or whether we um come to the conclusion that the event festivities, as you had said, um, Aaron, maybe those are pared down, and we have a later decision or a later conversation about the fireworks.
How mu- how much is a liquor license, by the way? I mean, are we talking significant dollars?
No.
Yeah, that's what I thought. So, um so let me, let me sort of see if I'm, do you wanna make comment, Lisa?
I was just gonna say, I feel like all of our conversations are pushing it off to a later date. Um, just kind of based on what we're all saying, so I guess my my initial thought would be to forego the Fourth of July as it is typically been held. Um, and whether we plan something later, um we can kind of come up with some options maybe and figure that out. Um, I did have a question, do we, the the money we've paid, that's for fireworks, is that correct?
Correct.
And do, can they be stored? Like, how long do we have to use those? Like, are they still, I'm pretty sure the fireworks shops use the same stuff for a few years, like?
I I loved your question, because that's the exact question I asked, Lisa, when we were sort of trying to understand it, and evidently you buy a contract, and Wes, you wanna, you're the one who told me the answer, so tell me the answer.
And Kim waved me off, but my experience in the past as a city manager is, you're actually contracting with a firm that has a special license to actually shoot off these kinds of fireworks. These aren't, the, you know, these are commercial-grade fireworks, so it takes a a special license and someone who's equipped to do it, and they're working in concert with it. So, you're not, we're not going up to Wyoming and, you know, to right across the border and and doing a giant haul down here for thirty thousand dollars in fireworks. We're actually contracting with a vendor who then, who then does this, so they give us a six-month window from the time that you know, that we have to use it, but after that, we i- it's a use it or lose it kind of scenario. Is that correct, Kim?
You've got it.
Can we postpone this as, like, like, if we want to postpone it till August, and then we decide August isn't gonna work, so can we postpone it again till December or whatever?
We got six months, Brett.
Right, but do we get one postponement, or do we get as many postponements as we want within that original six-month window?
I I read the contract before we came in here, so we're allowed one, so we'll have to make but but we can make that decision on July second or something, it it's I mean, we can go almost to the end before we make that decision and stuff on it. So, um
At that point, we'll spend most of the money related to the event if we were to wait that long, so.
Right, so let me, let me throw out some other ideas to you guys and 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 then we'll start seeing if we can collaborate on some things. So, one is, you know, one of the ideas is is do it in cars. Um, I'm gonna get killed by the Harmony people for this suggestion, but uh, maybe what we do is do it out by the peanut, if everybody knows what the peanut is out there on Timneth Ranch. And the reason I'm saying that is if if the developers there will let us park on their land, you could go three sixty on it around the 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 center, so everybody could sort of be right on it if they want and still be in their cars. Um, as opposed to it's a one eighty-degree view over there at the reservoir. Because half of it, you can't sit on a lake. Um, so that's just throwing it out. The the second thing is um the, on the, and this this doesn't have to do with Fourth of July, but it sort of had, it sort of does with the the food and stuff. I I'm gonna bring that up later, so I'm gonna stop there, but but we, let's maybe think out of the box and say we don't have to have it in the same spot, the same idea, and everything else as before. Is there a better idea for this first? Second, do we feel comfortable moving it off of July fourth, or do we wanna hang on to July fourth and have people go um there? And and so, comments?
I do think, I, sorry, Aaron.
Oh, go ahead, Brett.
Uh, I mean, just my my feeling is it's gonna be tough to have any kind of large gathering um with the whole town, uh even by July, it's 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 gonna be tough and and uh and like you mentioned, other communities have been canceling and uh, well, it's just, it's very easy to make it even look bad, if you know what I mean. Uh, if we're the only town in the area that invites everybody to get together. So, so, yeah, I I might might, I'm just kind of thinking out loud here, I mean, definitely, I I have trouble seeing how the festivities go off as normal. Uh, as a minimum, I'd say, yeah, we have to have people in cars and or try to launch them from a very visible spot from most of town, just Yeah.
Um, Brett? I agree with you, Brett, about uh um having festivities. I think it would look, it would look poorly on us, cuz I just I don't see us coming to a a point um that we could gather thousands of people together in in a place. I don't think that looks responsible. But I do think that the importance of having the fireworks, we're already in for the thirty-one grand. Um, and I think having the fireworks and then relying on people to to be safe and wear masks or socially distanced, but it's the Fourth of July, and and I think those fireworks are important just for the people's uh psyche. Look up at Harmony, all the flags that are flying, and that 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 people coming together to fly the flags. I think it's important for us to still have the Fourth of July fireworks. I've already been asked by a number of people that I assume we're not gonna have the 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 big party, but but we can at least have the fireworks, can't we? And I I've heard that already from four people, and it's only April. It it seems
You don't wanna celebrate our freedom by locking everyone in their homes?
I I just think it would be, I think it would be great for us to have that, and even if people could see them from wherever they're looking, that would be, that would be my choice.
I I do like your point of of exercising some trust in in the people of Timneth to to be responsible. I I think we can I think we can trust people here to
And we could always close that parking lot, so people don't go in there, just close off the reservoir if we decide to do them at the reservoir. I don't know how feasible it is to do it at the Peanut Park from a safety standpoint, but um, but I think it could absolutely be worth exploring um a different venue and uh relying on the experts um on where the venue could be, but I I truly feel feel pretty passionate about trying to keep the fireworks on the Fourth of July.
Rick, do you wanna make comment?
Yeah, the, I I don't disagree with what they're saying, but I would think that we need to weigh something else into this. And that's is Fort Collins, is Fort Collins Country Club, is Windsor, are they going to cancel, are they going ahead? Because that'll drive people to this community like crazy. So, we need to look at that, and if they all cancel, I think there's safety in numbers too, saying we're looking at an alternate date. Maybe Labor Day, maybe August, but we don't wanna cancel, we just wanna move it where we're safe, but
Okay, Lisa, do you have anything you want to add?
I, I I'm leaning more towards putting it off till a later date, only because I think by having them it it almost feels like we're promoting a group celebration. it it almost feels like we're promoting a group celebration and I worry about what kind of message that sends to people when we're trying to talk about, um, you know, social distancing. At this point, the governor's orders don't even allow for those large gatherings, so I I don't know when that will be lifted or or um, what those numbers look like. And I think for me, it's kind of weighing like what what's the purpose of why we break, why we celebrate Fourth of July? And to me, it's more of that community gathering. The fireworks are absolutely enjoyable, um, and things like that. But to me, it's more bringing those people together. And so I feel like looking at like how much we're paying for what we might be getting, I just would be, I would lean towards trying to schedule something later in the year.
So let let me throw out then, listening to everybody. It sounds like everybody wants to do the fireworks at some point. So that's the biggest thing we have to decide here in the short term is coming up with the second $31,000. So just as I formulate, if you give me a head nod, does everybody feel comfortable with, let's go ahead and do the 31,000, the second 31,000 for the fireworks? Please, okay, so let's, Kim, we can definitely put this off to May 12th uh, based on what everyone's saying. Because it's not going to take a lot of promotion to just run fireworks. It's mainly find a site and that's best. And maybe it's the current, the one we boys used.
And we don't need a liquor license, so we don't have to.
And we won't.
Don't need that, yep.
Yeah, we, so it'll, it'll basically hit that, so maybe on May 12th, you could have a thought of how you envision this at that point and we can then revise it June 5th or whatever the that that meeting is at the last minute to decide what we think will happen and spinning off of Rick. My guess is everyone has the same fireworks contracts that we do and we're going to be hearing cancellations or non-cancellations here for the next period of time and so we'll be able to react, I think, um, and still be able to have it if if suddenly the the restrictions and you know, all of a sudden we got a vaccine that works. Does that all sound good to everybody?
I do want you to know that.
Just buy the fireworks.
Right, and and just for transparency, and our Laramo County event permit is also due this week for the July 4th weekend. Again, I don't think it is a huge cost, but it sounds like the direction we're receiving is move forward with fireworks purchasing, move forward with the Laramo County event permit. And if we need to cancel that event permit, that's a cost that we're okay incurring. And we will decide where and when fireworks happen on May 12th.
I would, I would, when you pay the permit, see if they'd allow us to, especially under these unusual situations, postpone it to a later time and apply that permit to a later date.
We'll ask.
Yeah, I mean, I don't know.
Definitely ask.
Um, yeah, Terry.
Mayor, it it sounded like there there were two issues. One was the commercial town sponsored fireworks program and then you were interested and I'll gather the the data on what the surrounding communities are doing regarding, I'll call them home fireworks.
Yes.
I'll get with, uh, Robert Rogers and I'll I'll do some calling around as well and we'll, uh, we'll get you the state law and then the different municipalities and what they're doing.
Great, great. And it it's good to know the info and then we'll make the decision and stuff on it. Let me throw out one idea on these things, too, and then we'll summarize this thing up. On the summer barbecue, if we're allowed to have events. My, and thanks, Terry. My one thing, you know, we spent a whole bunch on food. Here'd be my thought on a way to be supportive of our businesses and have food there. And that is that we give 500, a thousand or so to each one of the restaurants if they'll set up a food wagon, a a table, a tent, whatever, to serve food. And then they sell it at at their, you know, at what, not their cost, but at whatever they feel like they want to sell it for. And so the difference is right now we give away the food for free. My suggestion is we support these poor restaurants who have just gotten clobbered and um, and also promote Timneth in the fact of here's our restaurants and stuff like that. Thoughts, comments, no idea?
Uh, I assume the the town had picked these restaurants before, they weren't just giving the food away, were they?
Yeah, they're they're giving.
Gave it away. Oh, they gave it away. Okay.
They gave it away.
And then they asked for chair donations for the children's.
I think you'd have people generally willing to do what they can to support their local businesses.
Do it and that food's not going to be that much, but Lisa, go ahead.
I I just worry that the current businesses we have may not have the infrastructure or whatever to be able to do that. Um, just thinking about all the restaurants that we have right now, um, to, for any of them to be able to do it on a large scale. Which we get, you know, we get thousands of people at this event. So that's one of my main concerns is is how do we bring those in? And what all that looks like logistically.
Kim, maybe let's not worry about because it's clear out in August, but maybe
Right.
Come into June or so, you could go outreach to, because we don't have that many restaurants. Uh, outreach to the restaurants we have and see if they do have the bandwidth to cover that and and deal with Lisa's concern.
Yeah. Yeah, absolutely.
All right, so you ready, Robert? Here's, here's what I heard us, I think, say. Uh, trash day, it, we're, uh, going with commute with the, most of these are, we're going to go with the recommendations, I think. So cleanup day is going to stay exactly like it is and um, and we're going to, uh, go with staff's recommendation. Taste the Timneth and holiday lighting, we're going to keep it exactly like it is and we'll uh, and but we might, we'll revisit that when we get to July 21st. Summer barbecue will, um, move that to the grand opening for the park and, um, will, and the date of that is August 14th. And by the the second meeting in May, we'll reevaluate that. We will cancel as as staff suggests, uh, the June 18th concert. We will keep the July 18th and the August 20th. I didn't get a good feel on whether we wanted to put a third one in there in September or not. You you suggested, Lisa, but I don't know as we resolve that, so.
We decided, um, not to since tasting Timneth is also in September.
Okay. All right, so then, uh, so that's exactly the recommendation. And then July 4th, we approve the second payment on the fireworks. And, um, and sort of charge Kim with coming up with some creative ways of how we can make it special if we, uh, cannot gather. Is that in agreement with everybody's understanding what we just went through?
Yes.
Okay, uh, do we need a motion for that, Wes, or is that just direction?
Staff direction.
Understood.
I asked you a question, Wes. I said, do we need a motion for that? Or is that staff direction and Rick's thinking of staff direction?
Yeah, I mean, um, ultimately, I'm going to defer to Robert, but um, I I staff has its direction. I guess I, what happens, we have a contract here. And so we just want to make sure that we're living inside that contract and if there's directions other than the contract that we that we.
No, that's not what we're talking about. It's, it was the whole list of events.
I understand, but those are inside of a contract. Those events are inside the Man Tooth contract. So it's that that I think that we're that we're that we're wrestling with here. Is that right, Robert?
Well, I I I think the majority of the of the direction that that the council has been talking through, it is staff direction. There are a couple items in here that I think are, uh, that are, that are a change, including the cancelling the June concert. I I I just for record keeping purposes, I don't think it would be a bad idea to memorialize it all in a motion. I I agree with uh, Councilmember Collins that there is a lot of of staff direction in here that doesn't technically require a motion, but I think one, one motion to memorialize the whole set of marching orders would make sense in the context.
Okay.
And I'm happy to lay it out there if you if you'd like me to.
I would.
Okay, so what I'm hearing is, uh, would be a motion to, one, move forward as scheduled with the cleanup day. Two, defer spending and a final decision until, uh, July 21st on Taste of Timneth and Holiday Lighting. Three, uh, defer, uh, future spending on the, on the summer barbecue until the second May meeting after more COVID clarity and consider options, including rescheduling. A- as that date approaches to to August 14th to coincide with the, uh, the planned park opening. Four, uh, cancel the June concert and delay the decisions on the July and August concerts. Uh, and five, uh, continue with the funding commitment for the July 4th fireworks and and permit fee. But continue discussions regarding timing and make a final council determination after more COVID clarity.
Okay. Wes. Me, I, that sounds great. Let's, let's go ahead and do that and then I got a quick question for you, Wes. So do I have a motion for everything Robert just went through?
So moved.
Okay. So Rick, uh, got a first and Lisa a second.
Second.
Thank you.
Do you want to do a roll call on that, Melissa?
Mayor Pro Tem, Rick Collins?
Yes.
Councilmember Erin Pearson?
Yes.
Councilmember Lisa Lake?
Yes.
Councilmember Brett Hanson?
Yes.
Mayor Mark Sukup?
Yes. So Wes, I think I understood, stand now as I think through it, what your concern was, maybe you need to express it with the council, so if I understood your concern, it was, do we have a contract with Man Tooth that's still going to require us to pay money even though we're canceling the contract, the concert, for example?
Yeah, so we, so there was a contract that was approved in January and it laid out specific events, um, specific dollar amounts. And so I just, uh, in this particular case, Councilman Collins is correct. The vast majority of it was staff direction, just kind of moving stuff around, but there were some specific instances where there could be dollars, um, that would be impacted. And so I just, uh, I think that having that clarity. I think, um, Kim's going to bring back a broader, a broader package for your look at the next council meeting and we can roll up some of these conversations inside that.
And I would think I would, so I think you got the direction we want. If there's, there's got to be an early postponement out of a contract like that for rain and everything else. But maybe I'm wrong. So maybe you and Kim, for sure, on the 12th, get back to us with do we have cost for something that we don't have any intention on being able to run?
I think we can bring back revised budgets for, you know, for July 4th if we had it, um, sort of non, um, non-activity driven and just firework driven. So we can kind of give you an estimate on what that would be. And a new estimate on the concert series if we're not going to be doing the June event. So I think we, um, can work with the event team, Wes, and make sure that we that everybody has clarity on what do these changes cost and what does that look like?
And and our ability to get out of the contract that you mentioned, Wes.
Okay.
Right?
Just altering that, right.
Or altering or whatever. Okay.
Thank you.
Is any, I I've been so good at at, uh, botching up the agenda. Did we get through it all?
I I have just one more comment on that. I'm just.
Great, Brett.
Then we'll want to get some kind of communication out to the public about our thinking on the events. Sooner-ish rather than later.
Kim, can you, got it? And, um.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
On favor?
Uh, roll call.
Take a roll.
Oh, roll call, sorry. Roll call.
Mayor Pro Tem, Rick Collins?
Yes.
Councilmember Erin Pearson?
Yes.
Councilmember Lisa Lake?
Yes.
Councilmember Brett Hanson?
Yes.
Mayor Mark Sukup?
Yes. Thanks, everybody. Sorry for such a long meeting, but I think.
Good job, man.
Thank you. See y'all.
Thank you.